Anita is trying to join.
Trying to zoom in.
Okay.
It being 6:30, we're going to bring this meeting to order. This is the Planning Board meeting of September 27th. We are here live and on Zoom, Zoom as a courtesy. And we're going to start off with public input. Is there anyone who would like to come forward with public input on a matter that's not before the board on the agenda tonight or with an open public hearing? Nobody on Zoom? Evan? Okay, seeing none, we will go next to discussions with Town Council pertaining to the matter of 270 Belrecker Road. So, we had a number of memos reviewing the relevant governing, zoning, and stormwater criteria. I don't know, they were posted with the agenda, I believe, so that anyone who wanted to would be able to review them. Is that correct?
Yes, they were.
So, we would be, I don't think we necessarily need to review them unless someone would like to.
I mean, I think it makes sense for Joel to sort of summarize his memo.
Okay.
And then maybe Evan can summarize his response.
Sure. Yeah, when we last met about this matter, one of the questions that came up, the Town Council raised that we discussed was, we established that there was a lack of information in the sense that there was information about contamination on the site that was not available, made available to the Planning Board either in the original filing or in the amendment filing as well. And we went, we did have a little bit of discussion about whether that information could have been made available. I think the applicant's attorney was claiming that the applicant did not, basically, he revealed what he was legally required to reveal and he also, and what he was allowed to reveal, and that he could show that or establish that with Town Council. But, in any case, information certainly was available to the board, could have been made available to the board in the amendment hearing because by then this person was the owner and that sort of thing. So, the question was, was the lack of information material to the decision? And that was the purpose of my first memo, was essentially in response to that, I took the action to look into that, try to establish whether it was material or not. And in some, quick summary, is that yes, I did think it was material. That Aquafor Protection District Bylaw specifies that there are certain things that need to be complied with in order to satisfy the requirements of the bylaw. There is the lot coverage, the lot coverage was the aspect of that for protection bylaw that was in play. That establishes that you follow the Massachusetts Stormwater Policy. And then there are also performance standards of the bylaw itself. That issue will come up in Evan's memo. Regardless, putting that aside, if you even just go with the lot coverage, that it complies with the stormwater policy. Stormwater policy consists of standards and also the handbook. The purpose of the handbook is to establish compliance with the standards and with the policy. And there were aspects of that handbook that were appropriate to the decision with regards to what are prudent actions to take and, more importantly, what kind of information should be provided in the case where you are basically putting a stormwater system in a contaminated site. And I think that we all agree that this was a contaminated site at the time. And so, the, so that was material in my, so I was claiming that that is, was material to the decision because it was information that the board should have been provided, per the handbook was not provided. And then I went on to say that, or to suggest or propose to the board that there could have been differences in the decision that was made. For example, the board could have found that there shouldn't be infiltration on the site so as to not risk the spread of contamination, the contaminated groundwater underneath, and certain things like that. So, I think that, I think it was certainly clear in my mind, and that was the sort of summary of that memo. And then there were a sort of, sort of parallel adjacent issues that came up subsequent to that that then I also sought to address. But, even despite Evan's memo, which you know I did read and look at, that I still feel that my conclusion is correct, that there was a material difference and that therefore the board has the, I think, has the rationale or the reason for opening a hearing to at least consider rescinding the permits for that lack of information. And then what I was additionally proposed, that four areas of concern that I thought that such a hearing might address, some of which may or may not be addressed by ongoing things that are going on in CONCOM. But in any case, I felt that the board has some unique jurisdictional questions that it could answer. For example, I gave the example of that the amendment was to lower the site by two feet. And if we had known at the time that there was contaminated groundwater and possible contaminated soils, that we might not have wanted to allow two foot, two foot, two feet reduction, we may have allowed one foot. Though, again, that to the point of there was something material to and unique to the Planning Board's jurisdiction over and above Conservation Commission's jurisdiction on these matters. So, that's pretty much the summary of, of the sequence of things that I was, and all the aim, really my aim in all of this, I hope you would see is, not because I'm looking to rescind these permits to keep the applicant from being able to develop this land, I had said early on, I didn't think that that was an outcome that needed to be, to happen. But I did feel that the board, my interest in this is that the board has certain rights that I feel were not satisfied, and I feel like the board should exercise and reserve its rights as much as the applicant does. So, that's it for me.
So, my memo, I think, pretty much speaks for itself. After reading Joel's response and Ruth's response, you know, let me just start by saying, I don't think anyone, including myself, is questioning whether it's a material change. I think if you recall, Attorney Doug Duchesne appeared before you and indicated that, you know, he envisioned coming back to the board for a modification. He also indicated that he would provide the board whatever information, you know, was requested. And then within the CONCOM current proceedings, the applicant is working cooperatively and addressing everything that the commission has asked for. So, within that context, I don't think, I don't think anyone's questioning material My primary purpose of the memo was to bring to the board's attention, as you review and consider revisiting the permits that you've issued, primarily Aquafor Protection, that the way the board has administered and interpreted both the legal ad as well as your decisions, it's very specific, it's very limited to 19574, which is lot coverage. And it's important to understand that that has not bled into the performance standards in 19575. So, I want the board to be aware as to how that, how previous boards, as well as the current decision for 270, was viewed and administered. It was simply within the context of compliance with stormwater. Nothing was ever mentioned about Section 75, nothing was ever mentioned about needing to meet water, drinking water standards. And over the last 15 years, that's been the case. This is not my interpretation, this precedes me, this has been the way it has been interpreted and administered, and I think there's some merit to that, particularly when you apply some, you know, reason and logic in reading and interpreting zoning bylaws as to how and why Section 74 was limited in scope. And we can talk about that in more detail, but I think that's pretty critical if and when the board considers revisiting, because it is one thing to say we're going to revisit the permit that was issued. Again, that permit was isolated to Section 74. But if the board is going to revisit and then expand jurisdiction, that's something different. And I think that's something that we need council's input, we, and, you know, I think that's something that's going to be relevant to the applicant. And more importantly, it's going to be relevant to the review process. I don't know how you apply drinking water standards within stormwater review. That seems foreign to me. But that's, you know, that's some of the insight there. My second major comment for consideration was, what's the process moving forward? What makes sense, what's reasonable and logical within the context as to what, everything that's going on related to 270? And what I've suggested is, and I think Attorney Duchesne has also suggested this, is at a minimum, wait until the first set of peer reviews are complete within the CONCOM process. And then, and then those can be shared and reviewed by the Planning Board, just to, just to set the stage as to what has taken place within the commission process. I've gone so far as to say that I think, I think the Planning Board would be well-served to see the commission process go to its second or third iteration of peer review. That's likely going to happen. The reason I'm saying that is because everything that the commission is going through is relevant and material to what the Planning Board would ultimately go through if you revisit. And the reason for that is because you're both, you're both asked to ensure and review compliance related to stormwater. And as far as I can tell, the jurisdiction within stormwater is exactly the same. If the Planning Board chooses to expand jurisdiction under Aquafor Protection to 75, well, then your jurisdiction expands beyond stormwater. But my, my position, and one that I think is critically important, is that it's isolated to 74, and as such, commission jurisdiction related to compliance with stormwater appears to be exactly the same as the Planning Board. So, if the Planning Board chooses to revisit its Aquafor Protection related to stormwater, site plan review related to stormwater, a major business complex presumably related to stormwater, I'm not sure how, what, how your process is going to be any different. I'm not sure what questions are going to be asked that haven't already been asked of within the commission process. So, I think there's some need to acknowledge as to how your process fits in with what's already going on. Now, if someone explains to me that there's a distinct difference, you know, then I would obviously, you know, reassess. But based upon my understanding, it seems like stormwater compliance review is stormwater compliance review. So, that's, that's basically the summary of my memo. I think it's worthwhile as part of the discussion tonight to try to see, you know, where the board is interested in viewing 74 and 75. I think that's important to try to resolve earlier rather than later because that's probably material and relevant to if, if you choose to revisit this special permit. We need to know if we're going to be potentially increasing jurisdiction.
Paul?
So, I reviewed both Evan and Joel's memos. I don't really necessarily see them as being incompatible. I agree with Evan's assessment that Joel is correct, that there is a material omission. This is information that should have been part of the process as soon as the applicant was legally allowed to disclose it. That being said, I'm not sure that a rescission of the special permit is necessarily in the board's best interest. As I mentioned the last time I was in front of you, it's murky as to what authority a Planning Board has to rescind a special permit. It's much clearer if you were Board of Appeals because the statute addressing Board of Appeals directly addresses that. It doesn't address it for a Planning Board. I, again, fall more on the side that you would have the authority, but it is murkier than I would like. But at the end of the day, I'm not sure what would be accomplished by doing that anyways. They have to go back in front of the Conservation Commission, they've got to get an order of conditions. That order of conditions will include a review of compliance with the DEP stormwater management policy. Once that order of conditions is issued, I don't see what authority the Planning Board would have to take a contrary position. Well, if the Conservation Commission issues a determination that they comply, I don't think that you would be putting yourself in a good position to take a contrary position just looking at the provisions of Chapter 195-74. "Any project drainage design that satisfies the stormwater policy issued by the Department of Environmental Protection dated November 18, 1996, as amended, shall be sufficient to satisfy the requirements of this section." So, if you've got an order of conditions that has been issued by the Conservation Commission, I'm not sure that your authority would extend to be able to question that determination. If this was a circumstance where there was no DEP jurisdiction over a particular property because they're not within 100 feet of a wetlands, I think that then you would be, in the first instance, the entity that would make that determination because the Conservation Commission wouldn't have jurisdiction. Where they do have jurisdiction, I think that falls to the Conservation Commission to make that determination, they would then have to come back in front of this board and get their approvals modified to be consistent with whatever plans are ultimately approved by the Conservation Commission. I certainly think, and I would encourage, that the Planning Board be active in the Conservation Commission process and share with them, you know, whatever concerns this board has. And I know that we discussed last time about peer review and sort of engaging a peer reviewer that would be also the peer reviewer for the Conservation Commission, and that you could ask specific questions. I think, I continue to think that that is a good approach because you, there are concerns that are being raised by this board that may not occur to the Conservation Commission to look into unless this board actually provides that direction. So, I definitely think that that's an important part in your role in this. But I just, I think that if you were to rescind the special permit and even with, I mean, first of all, I guess, what would be the purpose of rescinding the special permit? They would then come back in front of this board with revised plans to attempt to satisfy this board's concerns, which is going to happen one way or the other. So, I'm not sure that going down the rescission route is really getting you to a place that's different where you're going to wind up anyways. And then, once you make a determination on a modification, you want to make sure whatever determination you make survives legal challenge. So, you want to make sure that it's consistent with the zoning bylaws.
I have two, two things I wanted to address, one to have you address, and that is that it seems to me there are two concerns that, that I identified that would be unique to the, to this board as opposed to the commission, one of which is any, any potential, getting to the bottom of whether there's an issue with essentially permitting a building to go into a place where we don't know whether any sort of remediation has to take place under the footprint of the building. So, that essentially what we're doing is we're sort of preventing a possible remediation action from taking place. That would be one. And then the second one would be that I mentioned earlier, and that was when they were before us for the amendment where they wanted to lower the site by two feet. You know, would we, would we, within our discretion, want to say, no, I don't want to go two feet, I just want to go one because I'm concerned about uncovering contaminated soils or what have you in the process of construction and so forth? And those two things seem to me to be within our purview.
Well, wouldn't the second thing be under the Conservation Commission purview in reviewing the stormwater plan?
No, the second one, no, I don't think so because the commission, I'm pretty sure that, well, first of all, because we're the ones who made that decision in the first place, that is, the site level, you know? And I don't think that the commission would necessarily feel that that was within their jurisdiction because they don't have jurisdiction over the entire site, but changing the site level does affect the entire site.
But they have, if, if, my experience has always been that if a property is within conservation jurisdiction, they take jurisdiction over the entire site. And in particular, when you're talking about stormwater, which is impactful to the entire site and in fact is all sort of a component of, you know, how you figure, how you're going to handle that stormwater on that entire site, certainly, anything that's stormwater on that site is within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
Anything, anything that's stormwater on the site that discharges into an area that's under the jurisdiction of the commission.
Well, if.
There's stormwater on the site that doesn't discharge, it's not within their jurisdiction.
I think that if there are wetlands on the site, the stormwater is, is a stormwater plan that addresses the entire site. And I think that that, the entire site falls within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission in those circumstances.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that our commission has that viewpoint. And I think that was in part why I was interested in this board being able to, to address that issue.
And I think if, if that were the case, I would agree with you. If the, if the Conservation Commission doesn't feel like it has the authority to assert control over the entire site, then I would absolutely agree that that is something that this Planning Board should take under its review. If the, if the Conservation Commission is actually taking jurisdiction over the entire site, then I think that that would take away the jurisdiction from this board as it relates to determination of compliance with DEP stormwater management policy.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would generally agree with you. I mean, I think just in, in general, from what I've observed of the Conservation Commission over a period of time, is that doing this sort of, in other words, they would look to change, make changes in the stormwater system, they would not look to make changes to site elevation. I could, I've never seen them take that broad of a scope on something, whereas this board clearly has and did. And in, in part, the reason I feel comfortable in saying this is because the original application had it at two feet higher. So, you know, for us to, to say now, okay, you only get one foot, not two, I don't see how the applicant could say, well, I can't do that because you was, you were originally much higher in the first place. So, they don't, they don't have much of a, of a standing there. But, but, well, I don't know if you, there was a second question I had for you, and that was that, I understand, I understand Evan's argument, but it, it, the only thing I'm not, and I wanted to get your opinion on this, is can you actually have an article where there's performance standards on the article and then actually have a section within that article where those standards don't apply? Because that's essentially the way I'm understanding what Evan is saying. And that seems to me contrary to, it would seem to me that the, the standards would apply in the case of, of lot coverage, but then additionally, any specific performance standard also applies. But Evan's making it sound like, well, you can only apply the stormwaters, you know, that you must comply with stormwater policy. You cannot, you cannot apply the four performance standards in the article, and that doesn't seem right to me.
Well, except for the language in the bylaw says, "Any project drainage design that satisfies the stormwater management policy shall be sufficient to satisfy the requirements of this section." So, if this section is satisfied, how do you go and then impose additional standards?
And if you're also, and if that's the only, that's the only section of the, of the bylaw that, that you're considering, then? In other words, if you're only considering 74.
We don't consider 75?
Then you.
Not as it relates.
Is that what you guys are telling us?
Yeah. As it relates to lot coverage only.
Okay.
Because you're, the bylaw specifically states that if, if they comply with DEP stormwater management policy, that's sufficient for compliance with this section. There's no other limiting language that says, if you also comply with the other performance standards in the Aquafor Protection District bylaw.
So, in essence, it's sort of like in 74, you're sort of giving you your get out of jail card for the other standards because you're saying if, as long as you do this, you've satisfied this entire thing?
As it relates to lot coverage only. If you trigger any other aspect of the Aquafor Protection District bylaw, then you've got to go through the performance standards.
Okay.
Under 195-75.
Okay, that makes more sense to me.
What would trigger that? Finding PFAS?
No.
Any of the uses that are regulated within the Aquafor Protection. So, for example, I mean, generally speaking, the Aquafor Protection District prohibits any use that generates, uses, produces, stores hazardous material as a, as a principal primary function of their business. Other examples like dry cleaners would require, you know, a special permit. But those are, the uses that are listed that are either prohibited or require a special permit are very specific uses that are, that are in the business of using or producing.
So, this here, within four feet of the historical ground.
That's, that's earth removal, yep.
Right, but then there's an, there's an exception at the end of that sentence.
They're removing earth.
Except for excavations for building foundations, roads or utility works.
So, that, I interpret that to mean, except for as part of a zoning permit, a Planning Board approval, to build, build a building, put in infrastructure associated with that building.
Okay.
Well, I think they treated, they treated, the bylaw treats it differently. It acknowledges that lot, lot coverage in and of itself is not directly related to the use. Every, every lot, every use has, has impervious coverage.
But I mean, it doesn't seem to me to make sense if you're trying to protect the aquifer that the construction and the work that's done getting there could potentially be adversely impacting the aquifer, and that's in no way captured by our just.
Within stormwater, you're doing, you're doing construction review, there's standards for best management, standards for during construction activities.
So, there, so in other words, that, all of that is DEP and CONCOM, and then if, as long as they comply, the developer complies with DEP and or CONCOM, then that, what you're saying is that's kit and caboodle for us.
We don't tackle, we don't even.
But if you go back to the purpose that's stated, it talks about limiting the adverse effects of not only the use, but the development of the land.
Yeah, and the development of the land per the bylaw is regulated by lot coverage.
Stormwater management.
Let me give you, let me give you.
Well, the use is, not the development.
If you, if you go to 75C, the use shall be designed to meet state and federal drinking water standards at the property line. So, if you were to apply, if you were to extend 74 to 75, how are you going to do that? And what's the logic and reason to, to extending stormwater management to drinking water standards?
Well, actually, what I would say then is that when, when the applicant filed for their special permit and they specified lot coverage and we agreed with them that it was lot coverage, there was no knowledge of contamination on the site. Now, there is knowledge of contamination on the site, and I would think that one would file for an Aquafor Protection under the entire bylaw, not just the lot coverage.
But, yeah, but you've already said that the stormwater regulations in the three volumes give the board and the commission the authority to pursue contaminated sites as part of the compliance.
No, I didn't say that.
Not regulate contamination, but.
No, no, yeah, no. What I, what I was saying was that, that. that with regards to the, the lot coverage and it referring to the stormwater handbook, I said, putting aside the, the performance standards issue because I, I said that was, that was sufficient at least to make the argument about the material question. So we've sort of, it sounds like we've agreed about the material question. But now we're back to, okay, if, you know, knowing that the site is contaminated, you know, and if they had come in to us with, with, with a request for an act for protection district permit, knowing it was a contaminated site, then would this board have wanted there to be more than just lot coverage consider that the applicant should address more than just seventy-four? And that what that would require for us to do is to go look at the other uses and say, "Is there one of these other uses that can be comprehended to apply given the fact that we have knowledge that there's contamination on the site?" Because then we might have been doing something else with regards to, you know, what kinds of things that we were wanting to be done on the site, what was done with the site, stuff like that. Not regulating the remediation, but instead, you know, being a little bit smarter about what are the kinds of things that we want to do to prevent spread, to prevent exposure, to prevent that sort of thing.
None of the principal accessory uses get you there?
I, I don't think so. And I, I haven't taken the time to, to look at it because this, this question actually just, just occurred to me that, well, actually, they should have filed potentially for more than that. I thought that there, I thought there was another use that could apply and I have, I just have to go back and look. But I think it could be, because the issue is not, because in this case, I don't, this is not, this, I don't think this is a situation that the framers of the bylaw originally anticipated. I mean, the framers of the bylaw, as you, you know, as you pointed out, I think they were concerned about not bringing contamination onto the site. But I don't think they necessarily comprehended that we would start with a contaminated site, except for the fact that they did in the original bylaw, which was adopted in nineteen eighty-six, I believe, before it was amended in nineteen ninety-seven, which is what we have now, that in the language of the original bylaw, that it was to basically ensure that you had water quality standards at the, at the boundaries or didn't, didn't essentially make the contaminated worse. And so I think what, I think what they were thinking was, I think they did sort of comprehend that, okay, there's a possibility you will have contamination there. But then what you need to do with your bylaws to make sure you aren't going to make it worse. And that is the kind of thing that I think that, that we would be comprehending. You know, evaluate the, the site and, and the proposed project in terms of, does this make contamination worse? Which certainly comprehends as well infiltration. But it could, it could comprehend other things as well. So I think that as far as the, as far as how the article was framed, I think that, or the bylaw was framed, I think they, I think they did have that in, someone in their mind.
The ninety-seven amendment was related to floor drains.
Well, the ninety-seven amendment, what they said, it's interesting, Andy Sheehan, who, who was your predecessor, who I actually had the pleasure of working with on, on occasions. He said that they were adopting it for the purpose of, they were amending it for the purpose of protecting sheltered water from commercial and industrial uses and also to ensure a minimum compliance with the water quality.
Right. Because of industrial discharges. The, the use inside the building was using hazardous materials and at the time, floor drains were not fully regulated like they are now in the building code and in the health code. And the floor drain gets discharged directly out. But that's, that's why there's the, the drinking water standards at the property line. I just think, I think if you're going to move the goalpost, you need to have legal counsel involved because you're, you, you will be expanding jurisdiction.
I want to back up a step. First of all, do you, Paul, agree that the applicant told us as soon as they were legally able to tell us that the ground was contaminated?
Well, they, they were legally able to tell you as soon as they closed on the property.
Right.
I, I don't know what the lag time was from when they closed to when they informed you.
It was before our second hearing, before the amendment.
So again, you should have been apprised of this information.
At that time. Okay. I mean, I don't think anyone here disagrees that our, part of our purview is to protect the aquifer. I mean, I think the only, the question is that, I mean, first of all, the information was withheld. I think everybody agrees on that. Second of all, the lack of information was material to our decision. I think everyone agrees on that. I think Joel's made a compelling case that there would have been potentially things that we might have done differently had we had that information at the time we made our decision. However, I don't, in terms of what makes sense going forward, I guess I have some mixed feelings about it. I'd like to hear what other people have to say. But without a very, hopefully not lengthy expectation. But, I mean, I think Paul makes a compelling case that what we want is to have the project be reviewed by peer review, by Conservation Commission, and then by us in a way that makes sure it's satisfactory going forward and doesn't adversely impact the aquifer, doesn't spread the contamination and meets DEP standards and gets con, you know, the Conservation Commission's order of conditions in place and reasonable. So I think if we were going to rescind our decision, that that wouldn't accomplish anything. It's legally murky. And it, the only thing it might be is punitive and maybe we want to make a statement in a punitive way, but I don't necessarily buy into that. And if we were going to open up a public hearing about it, I would want to do it and then like immediately continue it. Because I think what we need is the information that we don't yet have, which is from the peer review and the order of conditions before we can make any further determination of whether we would want to rescind the permit.
Well, that's the whole purpose of opening a public hearing.
Right. But I don't think we want to do that yet because we were waiting for...
The only thing I would say is, I think you're going to want plans to show what they're proposing to do in the modification before you, I, I don't, I mean, if you want to open a hearing and, and talk about, you know, rescission, that's fine. But I, you don't want to take any final action until you've actually seen plans that show what they're going to do. Because if you do anything precipitously and, you know, rescind the, the permit before you've, you've reviewed the, the plans, I, I think that that is potentially, it's going to put you in a difficult position.
I think, I think there's a, I just want to clarify that. That the question, the question of having a hearing for a rescission is because when Paul was last here and we were discussing this, that we talked, he raised the possibility of an administrative review. But I believe that what you, what you said, for us to be able to have an open hearing, there had, it had to be tied to a decision. And if I recall correctly, you're saying that. And so that means that the, the only decision that we can make at this point, because they are not applying to us. So we're not making a decision or approval, disapproval. The only decision we can make is whether to rescind or not to rescind. And, and we're all jumping ahead.
You cannot, you can't make a decision to rescind or not rescind. That has to be done after a duly noticed public hearing.
That's, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. And so what, the whole, whole reason I bring this up is because what I am, what I am advocating for is that we open a hearing for the purpose of getting the information and being able to influence this design from within the, the way that we're used to doing that, which is through a hearing. And the only hearing option we have is, is for, to vote on rescission or not. What I'm, I'm not saying to, I'm, we're jumping ahead to the end of that process. I'm trying to get us to the beginning of that process so we can have a hearing. And that it may well be at the end, very possible at the end, we will not rescind. That's fine. What I want us to have is a hearing so that we can consider these things, ask our questions, have these issues resolved with the applicant, not for the purpose of punishing them per se, but for the purpose of us to be able to exercise our rights that we did not have originally. And that, that's why I'm in favor of doing that. Not because I'm looking to keep them from doing anything, but because I want to exercise our rights to be able to hear these things and discuss these things as we are used to doing, as opposed to waiting or having some sort of halfway kind of thing that's, that's going on.
The only other way to get that information is to go through the Conservation Commission meetings, which is going to be nearly logistically impossible for us to do as a full board.
Can we send them a list of questions that we want them to address during their study?
How are you going to?
There's a couple of, there, there...
It's practically impossible.
So we're going to do a peer review and they're going to do a peer review?
Because there's two material things that, that they cannot, that I'm, I'm claiming that they cannot address for us. And that is, if we have an, if we are concerned about the level of the site and if we are concerned about what happens in the location of the building footprint or possibly other things, that those are not questions that I believe if we submitted to the Conservation Commission that they would take up for us. Those are things that I think that we would need to take up.
Can we just not do a joint peer review? I mean, that's how I was thinking of the peer review.
We would. We would use their peer reviewers.
Our joint peer review. Like...
I, I think we should have our own peer review. And the reason I'm saying that, I, I would not have said that until I got the email, the peer review from Evan. And the very first thing that they say on project and site description is that there are no releases on this site. That is simply untrue.
That hasn't been determined, as far as I know. I, I listened to that.
There is a, there's a release, we have a, a form with a release tracking number. So I don't understand why the peer review is saying that there's no release. And then in the critical area recharge, they say that basically standard infiltration is fine, which goes completely against what the stormwater handbook says for contaminated sites. I, I don't understand why we would rely on a peer review like that.
So I guess, I, I'm sorry, I'll let Anita go. She's been trying to...
Okay. Go ahead.
I don't understand why we're afraid to open up a public hearing. Again, I think, I'm totally agreeing with Joel. I think we're, you guys are afraid of jumping that, we're, because we open up a public hearing, that means we're, we're a hundred percent going to rescind the, the applicant, the permit. We're opening up a public hearing so we can drive the process, so we can all get satisfied with the answers that they're providing. We're not relying on another committee to do our job. And I think we should open up a public hearing to rescind because that's the wording that needs to be there. And then if the applicant wants to come to us and make sure that we're comfortable with the permit that we have given them, then we can vote not to rescind their permit. But I think until we open it up and until we're driving this, I think relying on another committee is irresponsible.
Well, I have, I have a couple of thoughts on this. First of all, I tend to agree with Joel's analysis that we do indeed have jurisdiction. And Paul has confirmed that we probably do. But sometimes, and I think this is a perfect example of a situation like that, you have to combine some practicality with the legal detail. In this particular situation, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm correct here, and, and Paul straightened me out if I'm not, we could decide to open up a hearing right now. Or we could decide to open up a hearing later on when we have a better understanding of what information we're going to get through the CONCOM and through their peer review. Now, are there, Paul, are there any time limitations that we have to be careful of here that would preclude us? So if there are none, I see absolutely no point in opening up a hearing now and taking the matter up. Let's let the CONCOM do their work and they're a pretty competent bunch, as I understand it. Let's find out what their conclusions are, which may or may not discuss this two feet of land that we're talking about. At that point, we will have enough information and the public will have enough information that a public hearing might actually be useful. At this point, we'd have a public hearing, but what's anybody going to say? There's not a lot to be said. Let's, so my, my strong recommendation is to not opening any, not open anything up at this point, to let the CONCOM do their job, which is what Evan had suggested. And then if we feel that, that there's something seriously amiss in their conclusion, then we open up a, a hearing on this and consider rescission.
It seems to me like we're going to open a public hearing. And the question is when?
But we'll delay it.
And we'll have more information about, I mean, we can say, well, this didn't adequately get addressed by your peer review. We want to, we want this addressed and we, we want our own peer review to do X, Y, and Z. But we won't be duplicating, I mean, clearly they're on notice that there's a discharge that they failed to notice in their initial review. And maybe they'll do their work more carefully.
Yeah. I, I, I think if you look at it this way, the only situation in which this isn't going to come back before us is if the CONCOM saw absolutely no problem at all and basically did nothing, in which case we still have the option to open a hearing ourselves.
And it's certainly going to wind up back before you.
And it's going to wind up back before us. So let's...
So if I could make a suggestion, to the extent, I, I don't have a sense as to which direction the board wants to go here. If the board makes a determination that it wants to open up a public hearing, I strongly recommend that it be noticed as a, a hearing to either modify or rescind the previously issued special permit. If you do that, you may actually be helping the applicant get through the process more quickly. Because they won't have to wait until they complete the process with the Conservation Commission. They can do it on a parallel track.
John?
Madam Chair, after hearing the discussion between Mr. Luna and Town Council, it seems to me, would it make sense if we opened a public hearing to have a joint meeting at some point with the Conservation Commission so we can nail down this question of whether they see themselves as having jurisdiction just over the wetlands or do they see themselves as having jurisdiction over the whole site?
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
They may be confused on that too, yeah.
And we can't really do that without opening the public hearing. Because in order to, in order to officially collect enough data to be able to have that meeting, we would need to open the public hearing to collect that data. So I would recommend...
What data do you want, are we going to be collecting?
What has been done so far? Because the other problem...
Nothing's been done so far.
Well, that's actually not true. That's actually not true. So in order for us to start collecting information as a board, we have to open a public hearing. Unless you are all going to start following the Conservation Commission meetings...
Well, I have been. I know.
Not, everyone may have been.
One question I have is, can we have a joint meeting? Most joint meetings I've ever been in, it was because both boards or commissions or whatever had an, an application. And so they had an action they needed to take and they were essentially combining their actions. But in this case, we don't have an action. They don't, we don't have a hearing, as Chris was saying. So do we need to have a hearing in order just to sort of correctly have a joint hearing?
I, I don't think there's any requirement that you have a hearing open in front of you in order to hold a, a joint meeting. I would feel more comfortable if you did. I think it's more appropriate.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
I still don't understand the harm of opening up a public meeting per what Paul said, to either modify or rescind. So then it allows us more flexibility. Move forward. I just don't understand why, like the hesitation on all of this. If there's nothing to be discussed, there's no questions we need, we don't, we couldn't close it. I mean, I, I keep going round and round and it just seems really silly to me.
Okay.
Well...
Does anyone else want to weigh in? Okay. So then, I'll take a motion to open a public hearing to modify or rescind?
I'll, I'll certainly move it just to get it on the table.
So, so the, the motion would be to notice a public hearing?
Yeah.
Second.
Joe, is this guy asked a question? If this moves really fast, would you rescind that night?
You can't commit one way or the other to that.
I want to know, that, that was a very controversial project. I think it got approved by one vote and it was a split board here.
But do you, but this is...
It won't be in one night.
Just to, just to jump in.
No, but you're opening a public hearing. We can close a public hearing really quickly.
You're not, you're not exactly even sure what the topics of the public hearing are. what the topics of the public hearing are. Joel, Joel's alluded to revisiting peer reviews because he's not comfortable with Concom peer reviews. Others have suggested wait until Concom is resolved, and maybe Joel's two examples are what the Planning Board's additional jurisdiction is beyond what the commission resolves. And now you're talking about revisiting the entire permit. The only, Stormwater was not controversial within the original application. What's material and relevant to Stormwater is the presence of PFAS. But this is where I think you need council's guidance. Are you reopening the entire hearing? Every element, traffic, height?
So then we should, I think we should clarify that, and, and, because you're, the way it's saying.
Understood.
Modify or rescind?
Understood.
There's gonna be a decision.
My advice would be it'd be very limited in scope.
I think we should say.
Specific to what's material. The material changes, the PFAS related to Stormwater, nothing else.
In the notice, we should say what it is, far.
I, I agree, but it's not.
As broad as that.
It was to rescind or modify or rescind the aquifer, to limit it to the aquifer protection?
Just that one.
Just that one.
Might I ask counsel, if that were to be the motion, and if that motion were to pass, would the board in fact be limited to only those topics?
Yes.
Okay, so, but that, and that would go into the public notice, and it would be quite specific in the public notice?
Correct.
Okay, that's one I wanted to clarify.
And I think Evan's point is well taken. But Joel has, Joel has the solution. Limit the notice of, of modify or rescinding to the aquifer protection.
Yeah.
Permit that was issued. Which was.
Consider that a friendly amendment?
Yeah, but, but Mike, this was not a controversial public hearing. I think the board voted six to one, and wasn't even like.
You must, you must be thinking of a different project.
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize. But I think we should just be very narrow.
But, but your point's well taken.
No, no, that was the right point.
Because the, the first one, it's like wide, broad. Rescind, this project's gonna die.
I was just trying to get it started.
Yeah.
I wanna move forward.
Yeah, we gotta move forward.
So there's a motion and a second.
Second for the amended friendly amendment.
If you will.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Of, in favor, let's be sure what we're in favor of here.
Yes, can.
Notice to, notice, notice to, notice for a public hearing to modify or rescind specific to the aquifer protection previously approved permit.
Aye.
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 I'm gonna go nay.
Aye.
Okay, and Anita?
Six, six one.
Six one.
Aye.
I failed to announce at the beginning of the meeting that Anita was on Zoom, I think, or maybe I did.
Eh, she was, her picture was up there.
Okay. So, uh, I'll take a motion to, oh no, you don't have to. We don't have to do anything about that public hearing because we're just noticing it now. So next, on to our jurisdiction, discussion regarding our jurisdiction.
This is on Ten Hill, right?
Well.
I think it's more general.
Yeah.
Definitive subdivisions. So I guess, there were a number of questions that came up.
And I can say what questions I had, at least.
Okay.
For Paul. Question, question would be that subdivision, our subdivision rules and regulations specify that lots in RC require sidewalks on both sides, and that any other residential district just on one side. And so the question, for my first question is, does case law support us essentially, you know, enforcing that kind of rule or regulation? To, to, in case of an RC, to specify that we want sidewalks on both sides as opposed to one side?
So to answer that question, it, it's in the subdivision rules and regulations. Presumption is going to be that it's enforceable, it's sufficiently definitive that an applicant knows what is expected of them. The only question that could come up is, is this something that is typically waived by the board? I don't know that you have enough definitive subdivisions in front of you to have a typical
Right.
process as it relates to specific waiver requests. But there have been cases in which boards have very typically waived specific provisions of subdivision rules and regulations, in which courts have then said, refusing to do it for a project you don't like, is arbitrary and capricious and, and cannot be upheld.
Right.
I, I think, more likely than not, there's probably no history supporting, you know, a, a, a policy of waiving this, so you would probably be okay imposing it.
Okay. Now, to extend to the adequacy of a public way that the subdivision is accessing, what about a desire for sidewalks on that public way? If the subdivision itself has them, but the public way does not. What would be case law in regards to that?
So, my review of the case law, and I actually have a case ongoing in the Land Court right now addressing that exact question. And, and my position is that if it's not set forth specifically in your subdivision rules and regulations, that the board can require off-site sidewalks, then you're not allowed to.
Okay. Well, how does case law support the approval of a subdivision with a modification that reduces the number of units in that subdivision because of pedestrian concerns on the public way that the subdivision accesses?
So, adequate access is discussed in General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81m. There is case law that reviews it, and is upheld decisions that deny subdivisions based upon inadequate access even over public ways. Those cases do talk about there being concurrent provisions in the rules and regulations that, again, put that developer on notice, that that is something that can and will be imposed on them. So I've reviewed the Planning Board subdivision rules or regulations here. I see, let me just take a look here. Section 202-10-2, Determination That Development At This Location Does Not Intend Unwarranted Hazard to Safety, Health, and Convenience of Future Residents of the Development or of Others Because of Possible Natural Disasters, Traffic Hazard, or Other Environmental Degradation. And then Section 202-10, Subsection 6, discusses consistency with the purpose of the subdivision control law. I, I don't know whether those would be sufficiently definitive to put a applicant on notice that that is something that could be imposed upon them as part of an application. I, I don't really want to take a specific position one way or the other, other than to say, you know, the, the, the case law is not clear, as it would relate to our.
Does it make it a difference whether it's a denial versus a modification?
Well, if, if it's a modification to reduce the number of units, you're gonna be able, be, have to be able to make a rational nexus between the reduction in the number of units and the safety issue.
Okay.
You know, is, is it safe for 20 houses, but not safe for 40? And, and, you know, how do you make that determination? You're gonna need evidence to support it.
Could you infer from the fact that our rules and regulations do specify a difference in terms of pedestrian safety, in terms of the number of sidewalks, from an RC versus non, because of essentially the double density that results from an RC or can result from an RC? Is that sufficient to, for someone to infer that doubling the number of units would potentially be viewed as a hazard?
I don't think that it would. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna be very site-specific. I mean, you're talking about adequacy of an existing public way.
Yeah.
Right? And doubling could be going from one to two. Right? Or it could be going from 100 to 200. And there's a very difference in, in the nature of that impact. So it's, it's very, very site-specific.
Okay. So the, so, in other words, when you say it's site-specific, does that mean that you need the specifics of the site in order to make that determination? Or that there has to be some sort of metric or measurement or something related to the specifics of the site?
I, I would think that you would need expert testimony, expert opinion, that supports that this particular site is going to create a safety issue that does not currently exist.
And in this particular case, what kind of expert would that be?
Almost certainly a, a traffic expert.
And could the board, does the rules and regulations comprehend the ability of the board to, at the applicant's expense, hire such an expert to make that determination?
Absolutely, yes. Yep, you can certainly hire a traffic peer review.
Okay. That's, those are all the questions I hear.
I've got a couple.
Okay.
So, if there's a requirement for specific designs for septic or sewer or something like that, that is workable on, say, of an incredibly less dense site. And we approve, there's a, there's a project before us that is higher density than what would have allowed that requirement to be in existence. By us approving the higher-dense site, and if the requirement, if the restriction, so if there's a restriction, if there is a requirement to do something except where restrictions on the use of the land make it unavoidable, and we approve a site with higher density than what we would expect, and by that approval have made it impossible for the layout to actually be correct, and they have to do a modification because of that layout, are we allowed to reduce the density of the subdivision in order to allow that to be followed?
I'm not quite clear. I understand the thrust of your question, but let, let me, let me say this. Subdivision control law is not interested in density. We have zoning bylaws that regulate density. That is what controls. However, subdivision control laws do impose certain requirements and restrictions. And if a project is unable to comply with the subdivision control laws because of the density, then it would be appropriate to reduce the density to make sure that they comply.
So in this case, it wouldn't be an issue with the, the subdivision control laws. It would be a requirement outside of the subdivision control laws. So either sewer design or septic design, something of that nature.
So septic is part of your review as a planning board of a definitive subdivision. You should be getting a recommendation from the Board of Health as it relates to their septic systems. If they can't comply with the Title V requirements, then the, the planning board, I'm sorry, the Board of Health is gonna give a negative recommendation, and this board is then obligated to deny the subdivision.
But if, but in that case, if the design that we have approved makes it impossible for them to, to comply, and they have to do the workaround, which is allowed under the bylaws.
So then it is compliant?
It is compliant, but in a less adequate way. But it's only because of the fact that we have approved a specific layout.
So your role.
Changed the layout.
Your, your role in reviewing a definitive subdivision is to apply the subdivision rules and regulations. If that impacts their ability to meet the septic requirements, they have to get that resolved through the Board of Health. If the Board of Health makes a determination that whatever configuration they use is compliant, then you don't have any basis for reducing the number of units.
Okay. Okay. And Joel answered. Joel asked my other question.
I thought you had another question.
No, I thought so too, but.
Was there any questions on environmental? I mean, subdivision regs have, you know, one of the approval criteria refers to environmental information. And I know that, that seemed to be a, a heavy topic, the environment. Well, I mean, I, I had asked, and I, I meant tonight to ask the, um, the applicant of this project we're not talking about, about environmental information report in our rules and regulations, which is automatically applied when there's more than 20 units. But in cases where the board is, has concerns that that can be requested when there's less than 20 units, I assume that that, I, I, I assume that that's something we can apply, that case law would support that. Because we're just, again, we're just applying our rules and regulations within the scope of those.
Which provision?
Environmental impact report? The Health Department, the Health Department's asking for that.
No, no, they have a different thing.
Different.
It's a different thing. Hold on.
It's 202-8. D.
Yeah, that sounds right. The D part sounds right.
20 or more.
Uh, environmental, here we go. 202-dash, no.
So, "An environmental information report shall be submitted for any subdivision creating frontage potentially allowing 20 or more dwelling units. For subdivisions potentially allowing fewer than 20 dwelling units, the board may require that certain of the following be submitted where necessary to evaluate the, the plan because of special circumstances of the location or proposal. An environmental information report for a subdivision shall include the following documentation. Drawings shall be at uniform scale and sheets no larger than 42 inches by 60 inches," and then it goes and lists the information. That, that is definitive.
Yeah.
It puts an applicant on notice that that is something that could be required of them. That is absolutely defensible.
But to, to what extent can that information be used as part of the approval criteria under 202-10 within subdivision control? So a lot of that information will be, will be asked of in, as regulatory jurisdiction within Concom and Board of Health.
So in 202-10, subsection four, "Determination Based on the Environmental Information Report Where Submitted That the Subdivision As Designed Will Not Cause Substantial and Irreversible Damage to the Environment, Which Damage Could Be Avoided or Ameliorated Through an Alternative Development Plan."
Yeah.
That is sufficient to.
And that's within the.
Require a revision to the plan or a denial if they don't revise it?
Within the scope of subdivision control, or?
Correct.
So what's an example?
I, I don't have an example. I mean, I don't know what's been applied before in, in Chelmsford, but it's certainly, you know, reasonably definitive in the regulation. So it's gonna really depend on what is discussed in the environmental information report. I mean, to me, the way that I review this provision is that it's intended for the applicant to work with the board to address environmental issues and concerns. That doesn't mean that the board has carte blanche to say you have to reduce the number of units because we don't like the impact on the environment. What it means is that the, the developer has to take reasonable steps to address legitimate concerns that are raised through the submission of the environmental report. And if they're able to do that, they should be able to get an approval. If they're not able to do that, then you may wind up issuing a denial.
Or modifying.
Or, or a modification, although you wouldn't be able to modify it.
No.
They, they would have to either be willing to modify it, or
Right.
they're gonna wind up with a denial.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, Evan. Forgot about that.
Modify locations of units and how many?
It, it could be. I mean, again, it's gotta be reasonable.
I mean, again, it's got to be reasonable.
It's going to be relevant to the concern, I would assume.
Correct. Exactly.
So, just, just to be clear, the environmental rapport talks about impact of surface water quality and level, impact of groundwater quality and level, wildlife, botanical features and historic environments. So while, while subdivision control clearly gives the board the right to ask for the information, it also extends where that information is relevant and applicable to review and approval criteria.
Correct. I mean, you have this specific provision. Section 202-10 subsection four. That's, that's part of your criteria for decision.
Okay.
But again, it's got to be substantial and irreversible, so it's a pretty high threshold as well.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions regarding subdivision? Okay. I think that we are ready to move along. Next up is administrative review for A and R number 684 dash 17 to 19 and 25 to 7, to 27 Groton Road.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. My name is Sushman Dhafsha from Taj Engineering. The application before you is, put before the board by the both, both of the owners, the abiding property, the two abiding properties. What they are proposing to do is alter a front portion of the property and, and alter the old property line or the existing property line, which is this dash line, to what is proposed in dark, inhibit. The result, creating the two, the two new lots, one and lot two. Lot one is, I think, 21,000 square foot over and same, more or less the same lot two. We believe that both lots are meeting the required frontage. This proposal meets the requirement of the approval not required. We are not changing any grading, any topography. The proposal does, is not detrimental to the neighborhood by any means. On the other hand, it improves the traffic movement and onsite and traffic maneuvering of the vehicles on lot one. So with that, if you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Is this for future development of the lot to make it duplexes?
Not at all.
Now you have 20,000 square feet in both lots?
No. They, the owners, they don't have such a plan. They have not indicated to me such a plan. The, the buildings that you see on Groton Road on lot one is actually are businesses running right now.
Yep.
And the lot two has already, dwelling units on it already. And the main purpose, I think, as is mentioned on the plan, is really the improvement of the traffic movement on lot one.
Parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll take a motion. Me?
Me? I'm still trying to figure out what the purpose is. Knowing a little more about the purpose of this would help me, although this being an A and R, it's not an area in which we have a great deal of discretion if it meets the requirements. So, just exactly what is the required lot two frontage? And I presume that's frontage on Groton Road. So what's that, 125? This is...
It's right on the plan. The frontage, the frontage is 50 foot, which both lots have that.
Okay. So it's 50 foot. What's required, and what's this zoning district? This R C, R B?
C D, commercial.
C B, it's C B.
C D.
And what's the requirement there?
50 feet.
Okay. So it, it makes it. In that case, I'll move to grant a determination of approval not required.
Without?
Without determination as to zoning.
Second?
I'll second it. For five feet of frontage, I guess. I don't get it, but...
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a conceptual project discussion for 191 Chelmsford Street.
Good evening to the board. My name is Casey Ferreira. I work with Howard Stein Hudson. And we're before you tonight with a conceptual plan for a car wash development located at 191 Chelmsford Street. The intention is more or less to gauge the board's opinion on the use at this location. While we have this conceptual development, you know, a full engineering plan for a special permit would be significant cost, significant effort. So prior to delving down that path, we just wanted to bring it before you to gauge opinion just on the use here as the use would require a special permit. The property is located within the roadside commercial district. It's an existing residence right now. Existing residence has curb cuts on either side of the existing house. The existing house is not set back very far from the street. It does not meet any current zoning setbacks or use. The proposed development, the conceptual development in front of you would meet not only the use via special permit, but would also meet all relevant setbacks, including landscape buffers in the front and on the sides. If you'd like, I can walk you through the layout of the site. But our, our intention here is more or less just to gauge the board's opinion on the use. Katie can also talk about the special permit, special permit criteria as, as it relates to the use.
So just to go through this briefly, I think Casey summarized what we were looking for, that the use here in this district requires a special permit. So, we ran through some of the special permit criteria in a letter that was issued to the board, but I want to talk about, a little bit about the location, just to kind of set the setting. But essentially, it's on, it's on one side of Chelmsford Street, the side of Chelmsford Street that's predominantly commercial uses. The gas station is right below us on this plan, and the convenience store with the hotel behind it. The site itself exists right across the street from the learning experience, the daycare, and then right to, I don't see the north arrow, but I'm just saying to the, to the top of the page, I don't want to say north, usually is to the north, is, is the rest home that used to be Medical Associates when I was little. Right next to that is an office building, and then as you go down the road, I'm sure you're all familiar with, there's apartments, there's additional commercial spaces, there's a liquor store, and then eventually you get to Kohl's, the Kohl's Plaza. Across the street is majority, is in an R B district, so residential district, the Westlands. It's mostly residential, except for the learning experiences, which is right across the street from here. So as far as social, economic, and community need and impacts, this is a, a use that is at least allowed by a special permit under your bylaw. As Casey stated, we're not here under an overlay, we're not here under any, asking for any waivers. This meets all of the requirements of setbacks for buildings. It meets all of the requirements for setbacks and buffers from a residential use, which is to the north of us, the rest home. We consider that a residential use and make sure it met all the buffers there. We're reducing the amount of curb cuts from two large curb cuts that exist there today where cars can back out from the residence onto Chelmsford Street to essentially a one-in-one-out with complete access within the site. Regarding social, economic, community needs, certainly, commercial use will provide additional tax dollars over the residential use within this area. We're also looking to close up those curb cuts, so with a new sidewalk along the front edge of the road, it'll certainly help tie the social structure of the neighborhood together in, in a way that is more conducive to people walking essentially down that section of road. And then community need, this, this is a, considered based on the curbside residential district or the commercial roadside district, sorry, to be businesses specifically for high-traffic areas. So this isn't going to create traffic. A car wash is, is basically for people who are going this way every day already, who are popping off to, to wash their car and/or vacuum their car on their way home or to and from work. So it's not a traffic creator. There'll be approximately seven positions that will be here for part-time workers over the course of the business. Traffic flow and safety, I just spoke a little bit to that. Casey's already been in to meet with fire prevention and go over the turning radiuses, which would be submitted certainly as part of a site plan, but to make sure that they're comfortable with the access to and from the site with one curb cut and the movements created within the site. Utilities, public services. We have also talked to DPW regarding the sewerage here, and because it's a commercial use, essentially, we looked at the water usage for the five-bedroom house, which was 92 gallons for some reason, it was incredibly low. So essentially, we're allowed to apply that 92 gallons to the 1,000 gallons per day that the car wash would create. We do have the ability for a 500-gallon-per-day flex that's allowed to commercial uses, and then essentially, we would pay into the INI fee for the remainder of that sewerage, and we've discussed that preliminarily with the engineering department. Character and social structures within the neighborhood, certainly, we're looking to the commercial character of our side of the road. There's a lot of different types of architecture on that side of the road. We do have architectural renderings. I'm not sure that we provided them to you yet, but we could certainly provide them to you as part of the, the process to discuss the architectural renderings for the building itself and talk about how it might fit into the other sort of commercial businesses and/or Chelmsford Street as a whole. Natural environment, we are going to be within the buffer zone of a bordering vegetated wetland. You can see right as we touch the back of the building, that's the 100-foot buffer from the BVW. We're completely outside the 30-foot no impervious buffer, which is a local conservation commission bylaw for the town of Chelmsford, outside of the 25-foot no disturb. The building is outside of the 50, and you can see the 100 just clipped sort of the back, maybe 20% of the lot. And the reason we ran the building front to back like that was just so that we could meet all of the bylaws and make sure that the building didn't request any waivers from any of the setbacks related to landscaping and/or the building. And then fiscal impact, I talked about a little bit. I haven't talked to your assessor or your department regarding taxes, but I do know that certainly Chelmsford has a split tax rate. The residential taxes is less than that of commercial taxes, and so this going from a residence to a commercial use should increase that tax base. I know that's a lot. We don't typically come before you with something like this. I appreciate the time here before you tonight, but as you understand, it costs many thousands of dollars to create a full engineering package to submit to this board with all of everything you just heard about, engineering related to stormwater, et cetera. So we wanted to make sure that before we told our client to, to spend that money and that effort, that we heard from you as a board first related to the special permit. The car wash wouldn't change from here to the site plan. It's still going to be a car wash. So, we just don't want to, we don't want to go down that path and do all that work if this isn't something that the board is interested in. So, if we could, I, I realize this is not a vote this evening, we certainly don't have the public here also to speak to this, but we would like to know from you, the planning board, whether this makes sense to you at this location, based on that criteria.
What are the special permits that you need?
Just use.
Just use?
That's correct.
So there's no...
Oh, Aqua for Protection, I'm sorry, we do also need Aqua for Protection District, we do.
I was just going to...
Yep, we are, we are within the, most of probably, yeah, probably a third to half of Chelmsford is in the APD. So we would, and we would be required to fully comply with stormwater because we are increasing impervious also.
And would this go before Conservation Commission?
It would, because we're within the 100-foot buffer. Mm-hmm.
You're anticipating increasing impervious by how much?
I don't have the square footage, but currently, right now, I'm not even sure I know roughly.
Okay. That's fine.
Right. But it is, it's a single-family house right now with two driveways and a garage and a few outbuildings, so it's, it's a resident, it's been used residentially.
Yep.
I noticed that the owner is not the same as the applicant.
That's correct.
So is this...
So there's a purchase and sale on the property, that's correct.
It's a bound family owns it. I know the property pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
Used to ride my bicycle back there.
Yeah, it's fair, it's fairly typical that an applicant wouldn't close on a property until after permits.
A question for you, is that the reason why it's toward the front and not, you're not utilizing the back?
Absolutely. So where, I can show you...
It butts the bike path, and it's all wet back there.
This is, this is the BVW here. I don't know if you can see me and Nita from there, but the line that has the A and the numbers at the back of the plan is the bordering vegetated wetland. And then 25, the local Chelmsford bylaw says that nothing can be done within 25 feet, no pavement can be done within 30 feet, no building can be done within 50, and then anything within 100, the state requires, and also Chelmsford requires you to get a permit from the Conservation Commission. So, we basically, we looked at having the building this way, we looked at having the building this way. We also took, took into account who our neighbors were, what the required buffers were, the required offsets, and placed the building essentially to, to meet that.
I think the wetlands, that's the old Cove Brook, I think, if I recall correctly, that got displaced by 495.
Yeah. Railroad tracks and everything are behind it. Bike path now.
Very, very close to where the old helicopter pad was proposed, that I mentioned before.
In the narrative, you mentioned the vacuum stations and all the, the spaces, but I'm only seeing a couple locations.
Right. So they're essentially between, the, the equipment runs between the spaces.
Oh, okay.
And so the equipment lines up, and we can show that on the site plan. It kind of made it messy, messier to try to get that on there, but there are vacuums at all of those spaces, and essentially, what happens at these types of businesses is the employee or the employees, the few that maybe they would park in those spaces, and essentially not have their, their own space.
Just a question, because I know Jose asked about required parking.
Sure.
We don't have specific parking guidelines for car washes. Do you anticipate that, as what we're seeing here, may be overparked, and there'd be an opportunity for reduced parking?
So the parking itself is, is not based on people who are hanging out at the car wash and like working at the business, there are people there that are utilizing the vacuums. This is the suggestion from the business that they need this many vacuums to function. And what we did was we prepared a study of a couple different local car washes, and just, just to say, this is how many spaces they have, this is how many we have. It's a function essentially of their business.
How did you calculate the gallons per day that it would need?
So they've actually done this car wash in other places, so they essentially use a recycling system, so it's, it's basically 80%, I believe.
80% can be...
80% can be reused. So that's a number that they had when we started talking to them about the car wash. It was prior to the INI fee coming out, so we talked a lot about what, what a septic system might look like for a car wash use. And now with the INI fee, but 1,000 gallons per day is what they estimate, and that's based on their historical numbers and understanding of how the, the car wash works.
And about how many, how many cars per day would that be for washes?
Whoops.
So, so that's about, on average, 125 cars per day?
Okay.
And seven to eight gallons per car on average net-net after you, you take 80% of the use.
I know you mentioned that this use doesn't generate traffic, but there is a land use code for automatic car washes, so I would actually want to see a traffic report for this one as well.
I know you mentioned that this use doesn't generate traffic, but there is a land use code for automatic car washes, so I would actually want to see a traffic report for this one as well.
Okay, a traffic report or a traffic, an ITE memo, an ITE memo stating how many car, so it's, okay, so that's just different than a traffic report would study the area of one-ten, but I think if we look at the IT and prepare a traffic, an ITE manual and prepare a traffic memo, it would tell you how many trips, extra trips this would generate. Okay.
Just one, one suggestion or request would be, if, if possible, to add, it looks like there's some green space on that top side where you get near the Chumpsford crossings, assisted living complex. Would it be possible to add some trees, a screening, just to minimize the view of the property from the crossings? I think that might, that might be helpful.
Absolutely, and that area is heavily treed right now, and there's, there's also at least a four-foot high stockade fence that exists there today, but the landscape plan would be designed as part of the site plan, and we could certainly add to that.
Okay, you can try to save the majority of those trees?
I think so. I, we haven't done a grading plan yet, but there are some, you know, we'd like to probably keep the site as tight as possible with the, with any amount of fill. It does kind of drop off, right? It does-
Quite a bit, that property.
I mean, we have a full topographical plan, so we would, we would try to keep those trees. I think there's some mature trees that hang out right at that area, right next to that stockade fence.
Thank you for, thank you for coming with, bringing it as conceptual. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Hearing feedback. Anita?
Katie, I, my only thing on this, I'm not a big fan of it, but I could warm up to it based off of the design of the building and, you know, as my, you know, the screening, the trees and stuff like that, so if you guys spend a little bit, you know, time making, you know, the design and what have you, that there's a curb appeal to the building itself, I could certainly warm up to it, and I do appreciate you coming before us to get our opinion.
Sure. Anyone else have anything else? For Katie? Would you like us to do a straw poll as to our general sentiment of-
I would love that, just to kind of capture anybody who maybe hadn't spoken that much tonight, just to make sure we're on the right path.
Should we, want to start first, Anita?
I mean, for me, like I said, I'm not a big fan of the car washes, but I could certainly warm up to it if the design of the structure, the curb appeal when you drive by adds value to the neighborhood, because they're being a problem.
Paul?
I, I actually like the plan. I think entering and exiting onto Chumpsford Street should be looked at, obviously, maybe slight changes to the way that's laid out, but other than that, I think it's, it's a good plan.
John?
No, no other questions at this time, thank you.
Do you have an opinion?
I think it's a, I think, you know, I drove by the site, I do recognize there was an older residence there, I think it, I think it would be a beneficial project to that area, Chumpsford Street.
Mike?
I like the plan. So, and I like Paul's comment about, and the traffic right there onto, onto the road, so I like it.
Yeah, I like it. I share Anita's hope for something that's visually appealing and not impactful.
I have no fundamental objection to a car wash, and I think that the, the big question here is, would we accept the notion of a car wash?
Yeah.
The rest of it is, is detail that we can handle.
In general, I like the conversion of a residence to a commercial in that area. I don't have any opposition to the car wash concept. I think barring any major findings for traffic or stormwater or anything like that, I, I would support this.
Okay. Louis, thank you all very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move along to Ten Hildreth Street. I know a lot of you have been waiting a while.
Good evening. So for the record, Brian Goodrich, Hancock Associates. So in, just, just to summarize this evening's presentation, it'll be a little bit short. We have not submitted any additional information. We have listened to all of the public comments, board comments, commission comments to date. We're putting careful consideration into all of that as we work to revise the plans to address the departmental comments as well that, that we've received. So, quick update, we, we are working through additional revisions. Our Board of Health Hydro Geo study is still in process. We hope to have our initial report out in probably another couple of weeks. Conservation Commission has, has, excuse me, the Conservation Commission has engaged peer reviewers, CEI, for their, their piece of it. They've, they've been, money's been put into escrow, and that is commencing now. So I think the goal for, for us and our, and the applicant this evening is to understand specific direction from the board for additional things that, that we need to take into consideration and for, for revision of the plans. We were taking detailed notes with town council's commentary earlier, and, and a number of things popped up, so we just, you know, want, want clear direction on that, you know, specifically, traffic and, and detail on potentially this environmental report that may be asked of us. So with that said, we're, we're, our ears are open this evening.
So I think I'll, unless someone has a different suggestion, I'd want to take it around and see if anyone has any new questions since the last time that the applicant was before us. Anita? Any new thoughts or questions? I'm sorry.
No, other than I definitely would recommend we do the traffic study and the environmental study.
Yep. Paul?
I agree with Anita.
John?
I agree with Anita's suggestion. Paul, having driven that street, I do think that the traffic needs a serious look because of the, there, when you go down there, there were a number of choke points on that street, so that would be one of my main concerns.
Joel?
I just mainly actually wanted to follow up on a number of things. I know last time we asked about who the O and M owner is, and I think that was a little bit, I, I couldn't quite follow the conversation. So is this going to be like a condo association?
Correct, so the, the roadway is intended to remain private, and as such, will have an association, so the operation, maintenance of, of any of the underlying infrastructure, including the roadway, stormwater, will be handled by an association.
Okay, so there, there would be a responsible party on site, sort of?
Absolutely.
You were going to provide snow storage on the plans, and is that included in what you were saying, the sort of additional revisions to the plans?
Correct, so we'll be specifically identifying those areas for you.
Okay. I asked you last time if the applicant did, since they're under, I think we, you had said that the applicant is under agreement with the owner, and then I asked if the applicant had done due diligence, environmental testing, and you said that you thought not, and so I just wanted to know, do you know for sure? Is that, is it, can you give a definitive yes or no to that?
No, but I will next time. So I did not ask if there was a base one done, so we'll, we'll make sure to get an answer to you.
Okay, if you could, that would be great. I also asked that you would confirm with Historical Commission about the stone wall. Were you able to do that?
We don't have definitive answer for you yet.
Okay.
We're still working on that.
Are you, have you like scheduled something to talk to the Historical Commission?
Not to go before the commission, but if that's the direction that they think we have to do, we, we certainly will.
Yeah, so, so I guess what I'm looking for is like, what is your plan for calling them, emailing them, contact them, or what?
That's exactly it, so we're, we're going to reach out to the Historical Commission to understand. We did, we did look at the house, and the house is not historic, so it would be exclusive to this rock wall, and I'm not aware of any provisions that would make it a historic element, but we will try to get a definitive answer from the commission.
Great, thank you. So if, if you could have that by the next, next time, not that you have resolved it, but just that you had confirmed with them whether the wall is historic or not.
Understood.
Good, thank you. So involving the environmental information report, that it sounded like you would like some input on that?
Yeah, just, just guidance. So after listening to kind of the, the explanation of whether or not it would be suitable or under the board's jurisdiction to ask for, and then reviewing the bylaw, there are questions or there, there are the five parameters of the environmental report. Now, a lot of that is being answered by Conservation, a lot of that is being answered by Board of Health, so what specifically that is not already being addressed, would this board like to be addressed?
Right, and you're, and it's also under review by natural heritage-
Correct.
-for two different, basically, you need two different decisions from them, as I understand it. You need one decision for the estimated and one for the priority habitat, and that they could issue one decision before the other. And so, yeah, so would it help you if, I guess this would be a question for the board, is do you want me to compose a sort of, identify what kinds of things would we want, and that I would suggest we might want in the environmental information report to provide to the applicant? Is that something the board would like me to do?
Bullet list wouldn't be bad.
Absolutely.
You seem very well-suited for it.
I didn't ask last time about lot four being eighty, or if I did, I totally forgot, the lot four being eighty percent contiguous upland, or maybe Chris did, because he went before me.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
The lot four, the, a lot area is defined as being eighty percent contiguous upland.
Okay.
So in order for it to be considered a valid lot, it has to have eighty percent contiguous upland, and there was some question in my mind as to whether lot four met that or not?
It, it does meet.
You did confirm that?
Yes.
Were you including the floodplain in that?
Anything that is not a wetland resource area.
Okay, I think, I think there was, I remember looking at that, and I thought that the wetland, it, it was referring to a section in, in the Mass General Laws, I have, I don't remember which one it is now, the definitions of wetlands, and in those definitions included floodplain, and so that's why I was asking.
As a resource area, but not as an, like, not considered an upland area. So floodplain would still be considered upland, even though it's within a resource.
If you, if you, if floodplain was considered as a wetland, would you meet the eighty percent?
That's a good question.
If, if you could, if you could check that, and I will simultaneously check to see, refresh my memory as to that. Then you mentioned the Board of Health, that it sounds like where things are at, at least based on what we saw added to our agenda, that the, your geo, hydrogeo contractor, subcontract or whatever, and the Chumpsford Water Districts have worked out, well, there was a, this, this is my question, so there was a proposal on what that hydrogeo study would be, there was a review by Chumpsford Water District, and so my question is, what is the status of post-re, post that review? In other words, did you incorporate all of the Chumpsford Water District comments? Did you incorporate some of them, like, have you, have you resolved that yet, or just trying to figure out where you are?
So we, we did. So Northeast Geoscience is our consultant, they initially identified a scope based on a conversation, a, a meeting that we had with Chumpsford Water District. That scope was passed to the Water District, Water District reviewed it, they had their peer reviewer, independent consultant, consulting engineer review it, comment on it, we incorporated those comments, and that is the study that's underway right now.
Okay, because I, I know that they had suggestions on different ways to do things and so forth, and so you're adopting those, those in your study, okay, or your, your subcontractors. Okay, great, thank you. And in the, I, I noticed in your fill, in the aquifer protection, you mentioned that all fill areas will be filled with cut areas, but then the net fill is significantly greater than zero, so that made me question just what, you know, if you could clarify that.
Yep, so when you look at balancing a site, there, it's, it's going to be net topography. So if we cut four feet over here, we're going to fill four feet over here. We're building a road and we're building houses, so there's always going to be a net import of fill because we need processed material. So versus taking material off-site and bringing material in, we've reused all the material on-site, and we're bringing material in for the roadway, for utilities, for house construction, and other infrastructure.
Okay, okay. And then, the last question is, you, you've heard at least a couple of board members express concern about the size related to pedestrian safety and so forth and so on, which may have sounded very familiar from earlier discussions, that, so the question is, I guess, have, have you or are you considering the potential for reducing the number of units to address that concern, or some other ways in which to address that concern? Is that something that the applicant is, is considering?
So at this point, we're looking at everything. I don't think we've made a definitive choice to reduce density, because it's what the land supports right now. What I would, what I would say is, we'll continue to work through those concerns as we develop revised plans set and address these other comments, specifically, the environmental report, and, and making sure that we're proposing a project that, that is not detrimental.
Okay, would you benefit, would you want to have a straw poll from the board on that matter, or would you rather the board to wait on that matter?
I mean, a non-binding straw poll, you know, it's just, it's information, if, if you would like to, you know, our, our ears are open, I'm happy to take notes on it.
Joel, wouldn't, wouldn't the traffic study provide board guidance, additional guidance to that issue?
I, I definitely think it should. I was more, because I raised the question, because in earlier applications, I think that the, the feeling was that if the board had given indications sooner to the applicant as to where it was at on things, that that might have helped the process for the board, for the applicant, and for the residents as well, and so I was sort of feeling out the applicant as to, as to-
Very prudentness.
But that's, those, those are the questions that I-
Anyone else have any other questions first?
I just got a couple of questions. So my issue is, I know they spoke about, is I've been on that street as well, the intersection of Hildreth and this is very tight, so that something has to be worked at, looked at. I'd like to see if you, if, when you continue moving forward, I'd like to see two things, an existing tree removal limit, where that is on the plans, I haven't seen that. I'm in a butter of one right now of a development like this, it totally changes the neighborhood, and every tree came down, and it changes everything. But I also do, I think I asked in previous, I know we cannot look at the elevations, and this board right now doesn't see in a subdivision elevation, but I would like to see that it is a three-story, only three stories, and not three stories plus a bonus room, which makes four stories, which is being built right now in town in an RC district. So I'd like to confirm either on a drawing, even a section through, you don't have to show us what it looks like, because we don't, as a subdivision, right, Mike, we don't look at the architecture of it, but I'd like you to confirm that it's three stories only within the max of the thirty-five feet high. That's being proposed. Okay. If, if you can do that, that would be great.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I, I very much agree with the concerns expressed on environmental and traffic. These need to be investigated, and I, clearly, they are underway, so I'm not inclined to give an initial opinion on this, even a straw poll once, until I have a bit more information to base it on. I, I don't think it's wise for us to, to make commitments that then somehow are, even if they're not commitments, somehow they tend to stick. But that said, there are concerns here, and, and I think you're well aware of them, so.
Chris?
In one of the letters from, I haven't noticed this till recently, it was the assessor- In one of the letters from, I haven't noticed this till recently, it was the assessor's office. It mentioned something about the lots needing to be combined before being subdivided?
Yeah, I mean, the, and our, town council can help with this. Currently, there's two lots. Separate, separate deeded lots, and obviously the definitive subdivision is proposing to combine them into one lot. The assessors seem to think that there needs to be an additional step outside of subdivision.
I don't see why that would be necessary.
But even if it were, it'd be, basically it's a paperwork activity.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
Yeah, it was news to me as well.
Okay.
Logistical.
I noticed on Lot Four, and I think it was brought up from the neighbors, that there's a significantly, significant high retaining wall. What are the, what are the ways that you're going to minimize safety issues with that? What are the plans for that?
So the retaining wall, first thing, obviously we heard kind of the discussion last time about waivers. So the waving of the turnaround seems a little contentious. If we were to revise it and go to a full cul-de-sac, the grading might change in that area, which would adjust the wall. So setting that aside, if a wall is proposed in the next set of revised plans, there's, there's two pieces. If the wall is over thirty inches, it has to have fall, fall protection for pedestrians. And then obviously proximity to the roadway needs to be a traffic impact barrier. There's usually two ways that you accomplish that, is with guardrail, or with a structurally engineered wall to provide that barrier that's raised up above the lane of travel, if you will. So the wall will be encrypted with both of those measures.
Okay, as part of the, the final designs, I would like to see that as part of the included design as well. This is more of a question for the board. I know in some of our discussions around policies and changes that we wanted to make, we had talked about keeping a running list, a central running list of concerns and issues. This might be a really good project to start doing that because of all the complexities. So I didn't know if we wanted to.
Sounded like you just volunteered.
No, I think what we were talking about was the clerk.
Yep, that was who we assigned it to. All right, so the retaining wall would be on the list, correct?
Well, obviously, the, the environmental concerns and the safety concerns, they're quite large and generic, and they could be broken down into a lot of subcategories.
Can I actually make a suggestion that we, I would need to go through my notes in order to be able to do that? Would it be possible to just send them?
Send me, send me your list. I'll compile them and, and send it out. It's a deal.
Because I'm not prepared to list them out right now.
Yeah.
Send, send the stuff to me, and I will, I will compose something.
Anything else, Chris?
Nope, that's it.
So most of my questions have been answered. I feel I'm not at all ready to make a straw poll determination without waiting for the additional information that we're waiting for.
Well, we haven't asked, actually, for a traffic study. And, and I don't think that, well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I guess the question would be, what kind of traffic study?
I was going to ask this as well.
Because the concern, at least that, that Chris and I have expressed is, is I would say more or less narrowly focused on the issue of pedestrian safety. On Hildreth, at least, well, you may, you may have more.
I would nuance that a little bit. I would say pedestrian safety during construction because of some significant sized trucks, and for normal operations, after, post-construction.
Not, not a similar concern for the two-way traffic that the neighborhood has expressed?
I think I would have a concern for the intersection of Billrica and Hildreth as well. And if anything could be done.
Paul, you had mentioned that you're currently in court on this particular issue, correct? Adequacy of way and traffic?
I am in court on an issue of requiring sidewalks offside.
Did that project do a similar traffic study?
Yes.
Can you provide me the, the scope, maybe? Maybe I'll share that with the board?
That'd be great.
To Joe's point, we've never really done a traffic study like this.
Yeah.
Normally been.
I'm, I'm almost imagining a two-step process. First, we need to just add up the number of people there now. The people we're going to add is, is six buildings, twelve units, you know, a fifty percent increase or a five percent increase. And we look at that, and then I think we make a determination from that as to whether we need something more formal. So I think we could do this in two steps.
Let's see what Paul provides, and then we'll take it from there.
Well, I mean, the, the question was raised was because to establish expert opinion, particularly regarding the question of safety. For potential use in a legal proceeding, and so for that reason, I think we certainly want to have that question answered. And so I, I would think that we would certainly want some kind of expert analysis done.
Yeah.
So that would be, so the action then is that, that Paul will provide scope to Abenham, and we'll provide that to us, and then we'll review it.
We'll get her on the list.
Okay, so that's, that's good. Just so, I just want to make sure the applicant knows what we're doing, so that you can anticipate, you know.
So for clarification, we're not going to engage a traffic study until you have reviewed a scope that has been provided, at which point in time you'll kind of determine what you want to say, what the concerns are. Okay, understood.
Are you old enough to proceed on the environmental study, right? Or are we going to make a list?
You were going to make a list on that?
I took the action to provide a list of items to the board.
Now, we have not actually opened a public hearing, or have we?
I think.
I want to understand our status right now.
Right, no, I think it's time to do that.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, sorry.
Just a question to the applicant, because there's a lot of waivers that they've requested here. If these waivers weren't granted, would the, would the design of the subdivision change?
The, the roadway would. So based on the conversation that we had last meeting, we're revisiting that waiver list with the expectation that we're paring it down or eliminating it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then I would ask for a motion to open the public.
Public hearing's already open.
Or to continue the public.
We just do it.
Right, so if anyone has anything there from the audience. Now, last week, we had, I would say, excellent discussion with everyone being very polite, and we really appreciate that. I would, I would request that if you've spoken last week, unless you have something quite new and material, that you let anyone who didn't speak last week speak first, and maybe wait till next time to speak, or if it goes really quickly, then speak again. But I would like to keep this to be a relatively short session. And we've heard a number of your concerns, and we had a number of letters, which I know we've all read, that were very informative and helpful as well.
It's Lois Barber, Seventeen Turnpike Road, and I just want to submit my letter to people about my concerns.
Does she want to summarize or not?
Oh, sure, I can briefly summarize for you. I'm going to read it for Lois, as she is legally blind. So she is a resident of Seventeen Turnpike Road in Chelmsford. She received the abutter's notice, notifying her of the changes to the wetlands. She has quite a few concerns, one of them being that, first of all, the properties we have talked about many times is on the level two aquifer, and how is that going to affect the neighborhood, her neighborhood, the town, the town's drinking water? She's also concerned with the plans of moving the wetlands closer to her property, as that is going to send water closer to her. She's right on the lines of Bieber Brook. With the movement, it's going to send more water in that area, which is going to cause more flooding in her neighborhood as well, as well as on Turnpike Road. So it's not just affecting the neighbors on Hildreth Street. She's also concerned about the disregard for the protection of the wetlands. The wetlands are supposed to be protected, habitats for many different animals, and it's what makes this town special. And it seems like that anytime there's a piece of land, we're trying to put up as many buildings as physically possible with disregards to lots of different areas. She's been at the last couple of meetings, listening both at Conservation as well as here at Planning. And just from seeing what she's hearing, she's concerned with a lot of things. She lived in Chelmsford for most of her life, moved to Florida, has moved her family back to Chelmsford. Her family lives at both Seventeen, Fifteen, and Thirteen Turnpike, so they're all together. And this is now affecting not just her, but her sister, her nephew, and her sister's children. These are things that, again, don't only affect us on Hildreth Street, but affect the other neighbors on Turnpike and other areas. And it's not just us that are concerned. She's here to express that she is concerned about what's being done and how it will impact her as well. So I'm going to submit her letter, which goes into a lot more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda Carney from Nineteen Plum and Seventeen Hildreth, again, sorry to be in for you. I just wanted to bring to the point that in canvassing for our signatures, my husband and I had the occasion to visit everyone, nine out of the ten homeowners on Bernard Lane, the property that flips over the other side of the wires, that's the same contractor and basically the same plan, only they put in five houses there. They're proposing six. So this is Bernard Lane, right off Turnpike by the bank. And in talking to them, two things became really clear to me. One is they all feel loyalty to the contractor. They feel that he's doing a great job being responsive to their needs, and therefore would not sign our petition because he is being responsive. That I understood loud and clear. But they also made it clear to me that there is a problem with water issues, both inside the building and outside the building, that is, are less than two years old. Someone has water in their basement, and I can tell you which lot number that is if you'd like, and they have trouble with the outside water, even though they've put in the infiltration pool and the necessary requirements. And they too are very concerned about moving the wetlands closer to their property by moving them up and under the national grid area. So I just thought it worthy of note because that was firsthand information that I gained. In addition, I'd like to just add that in speaking to my tenant, because we are a two-family that rents half of the home, he has indicated that the reason he chose to live there was because it was a quiet residential area. And already with the building that has transpired since he's moved in, he's seen a change in the quality of his life. And I am wondering if I am going to be held with an unrentable piece of property should even more noise, more people, more cars come into the area. So things that hadn't been yet mentioned, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Aaron Cunningham, sixty-seven Billrica, driveway's on Purham, so I have that nice little corner over there. You heard my statements the last time, I stand by those. I would like to add, since we talked about traffic tonight, so I have two concerns that hopefully this environmental study and these other things will answer. I'm not a big fan of the septic that close to my drinking water, because if that goes bad, it all goes bad. You can't, you can't undo that. That's an undoable thing. So just to make sure that that's on the record. But this traffic study, I, I hope that it's not just, hey, there's X number of residents, X number of cars. I think it needs to be a real study, because it is a cutthroat. I watched them take the right, go down, take the left, take the left on Hildreth, so that they can get by those, those ten cars. So if you're just going to do math, that traffic study's not going to give you the reality on that street. And it, and they, and again, it's not just the one that goes to Hildreth, it goes around towards Summer Street, too. So that, that Purham, nice and wide, two cars, not as bad as Hildreth, it's still a problem. So if you're not going to account for that traffic, then I, I wouldn't waste time or money on just doing physical math on the number of residents, because you're not going to get the real number.
What are they trying to get around, the traffic?
Center school.
Heading towards the center?
Because, heading towards Center School. In the afternoon, it's the other way, right? In the morning, you get that light with the Golden Cove and the Turnpike and the Center School, and it starts at about seven, and it kind of finishes up around thirty-nine o'clock, you know, once Center's kind of done and in and out. But I literally, we watched them do it. They go up and they go around. I mean, we're nosy neighbors, so we watch what's going on, because it might get them five cars ahead. That's all. It's, it's motion. So that's my only ask, is that you can't just do maths. There's got to be a physical car count, because then you'll get the real numbers. It's just crazy. I should be doing my walking loop around there. I haven't been doing it lately, because I do walk up Hildreth, and it's just, it's, somebody's going to get hurt, I'm telling you, one way or another. And I, I think, you know, if this was another set of duplexes, this might not have gotten the ire, but this is a whole neighborhood that's going in here. And I think the impact's going to be greater than, I mean, I think we all think the impact's going to be greater than what's being talked about now. So I really appreciate it. I would love to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I have to go across town and pick up a kid. So if anybody has any questions, you guys know how to get ahold of me. Thanks again, guys. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
How you doing? Justin Johnson, twenty-six Hilda Street. I just want to elaborate a little bit more on the traffic. Most of it's already been said, but on Hill, like, living on Hilda Street, been there just about my entire life. If I leave the house in the morning to go to work, I sometimes have to go down to Purham to get back to my house. I can't get back through Hildreth Street quickly if I needed to double back to work. That's the, that's the traffic that's already in that area between like seven to nine. And then on the way home from five to six, it's already that bad. It's forcing residents to, like he had just said, use alternative routes within our neighborhood just to get back to our houses. I, I think that's a bit much, asking to put another six duplexes, twelve families, on such a small, small road, where we already have people coming down these roads to try and get a couple cars ahead in the traffic on one-twenty-nine in the morning. It's crazy. Kids are trying to walk to school. I live at the dead end, all the way down at the bottom, and I have people flying up my driveway. They've almost hit my dogs. They use my, my yard as a turnaround, damage my property. I've had somebody drunk pull into my driveway. I don't, I just can't agree with like any, like any of this. And I just want to make that known. I, my brother, who lives at the house with me, him and his, him and his, him and his wife just had a new baby, and I'll be damned if somebody comes down and causes an accident down there while they're out walking the child because of traffic, or increased traffic. It just doesn't make sense. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we're talking about traffic, Paul, is the, is what the board is reviewing isolated to adequacy of way? Or does it extend into trap, general traffic, and if so, how far beyond the main adequacy of way can the traffic study go?
I, I think anything that the board does needs to be tied to the adequacy of the way. Because that is the specific reference in Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one M. And you've got reference to that, although it's not quite as direct as I would like, you do have reference to that in your subdivision rules and regulations.
Adequacy of way, in this case, could be two, two, two ways, because two streets are being mentioned, Hildreth and Burnham?
It's adequacy of access, so it, it's not necessarily just the roadway that the, that the project is located on. It's how do you get to the site?
So what about extending it to Billrica Road?
Extending the review to Billrica Road? I mean, I wouldn't, I think that if you're talking about reviewing the adequacy of Billrica Road, I think that. talking about reviewing the adequacy of Bilrika Road, I think that goes beyond the scope. You certainly would look at intersections along there and the impacts on those intersections. That's typical on a traffic review, but I wouldn't necessarily look at the safety of Bilrika Road.
Two components.
But I would be looking at the safety of Hildreth and Plum.
Right.
And also how traffic volume can impact the safety as well.
Correct.
Because of redirecting traffic.
Thank you.
I actually had an example of a road safety study that I was going to forward to you, but...
How you doing, Nate?
Four Hildreth.
Talked last time about the water. I'm not going to talk about that. I'm talking about the traffic. I have three kids, a five-year-old and twin boys. We live at number four. We walk to school. Next year, my wife's going to have to walk three kids up the street to Center School. My office is right out front. I look out. She walks. There's a landscaper truck. She almost got hit, walking the street with my daughter. It's going to happen for the next six years. My kids are going to walk to school. And then when they go to elementary and/or junior high and public and high school, we're going to have to drive. And we cannot get out of our street, like the previous gentleman had talked about, after a certain amount of time. I can't go to work in that ten-minute window. It's gone. And we're going to add twenty-four more families or twenty-four more cars. And on Hildreth Street, on the new road, they're going to build a sidewalk that leads to Nowhere. There's no sidewalk on Hildreth. You can't put it on my side. There's trees all the way along. You're going to put it on the other side. There's trees on that side. Where are we going to put a sidewalk? We're going to put a sidewalk on the new road to Nowhere. It doesn't make any sense. So for my kid's safety, my family, I strongly oppose. I understand that it's approved for resident for two family. I get that. Six, just a little too much in our neighborhood based on traffic, kids. Last week, took all my kids down to Plum. We rode our bikes. There was ten, twelve kids. It was not a care. We had more families, trucks. It was a Saturday, I think, or Friday afternoon, more trucks. Your head is on a swivel. My head's already on a swivel, but it's more trucks, more things to worry about. So for those reasons, I oppose the six. I understand that there needs to be, he has the right to do what he needs to do. However, putting six duplexes in our backyard, based on what the gentleman said that the land proposes it, I strongly oppose. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Paul, can you send me a copy of that report as well?
Yes.
Thanks.
What was the question?
He mentioned to Evan about traffic safety, one that was particularly concerning safety.
Whatever I get from Paul, I'll forward out to everybody.
That'd be great. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I would like to...
Can you continue?
Yes.
You have it.
October eleventh. Goal being that we'll review Joel's environmental list.
We'll go over the list.
And...
All the...
Yeah, I don't think we're expecting any new submissions from the applicant.
Right. Okay.
But I think that may be a short enough thing to cover.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Anita?
You can review your list, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, that's exactly. We'll review all the to-do list. It'll kind of...
That was the eleventh.
...jail the project.
October eleventh.
Yes.
October eleventh.
Okay, next, we have Three Meeting House Road, JNC, requesting approval under Article Twenty-one, Community Enhancement, CEIOD, in subsections one-ninety-five dash one-eleven-C, zoning bylaw to allow the conversion of existing commercial office space into eight residential apartments. The site is in the CD, Commercial Zoning District, as shown in parcel ID map seventy-three, block two-ninety-five, lot six, consisting of approximately sixty-nine-thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty square feet.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Katie Enright with Howard Stein Hudson. At the last meeting, I went through a presentation, and I believe what we were waiting for is a new letter from the DPW at the end of that meeting. So we had, as soon as this meeting ended, the next day, I believe we submitted a new set of drawings to the engineering department, and I believe you have a review in your file as it relates to that. Essentially, everything, I believe, is cleaned up from that letter. We were able to provide the DPW with the information that they needed. There was an additional discussion about sewerage. Essentially, interesting, but the way that the sewer moratorium reads for the INI fee is that they compare the actual water usage of a building over the last ten years and throw out a few outliers. So it has nothing to do with Title V, but then they estimate sewer based on Title V, which has a huge factor of safety, and then they make you pay the difference to do the INI. So essentially, they looked at the water usage for this building. It wasn't the eight-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day that I had estimated based on Title V. It was more like five-hundred-and-something gallons per day for actual usage. Then they took our Title V flow and subtracted them out. So there was a, essentially, we were increasing the sewer usage based on that estimation, so we need to pay into the INI fund for the sewer. And I believe they wrote it out in their letter to the board. But I believe that was it. So if there's anything additional, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know it's been a long night already, so I won't go back through any of my presentation. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you just remind the board what we're, what's the application for?
Sure. It's by right seoid.
No aquifer?
No, there is aquifer here also. Yep. It's about half the lot. It cuts behind the building and is the back half. So we're essentially removing a significant amount of pavement in the aquifer portion of the lot.
And putting a garden and...
And putting some open space. Yep.
Evan, the last letter from the DPW we have is the one attached on the agenda, right? Nine-twenty?
I have the one up on the screen is September eleventh.
That is attached to the agenda?
This is the one you're referring to?
That was the original letter.
This is the original letter?
Yep.
Yeah, it's the last link under New Documents.
Yeah, go to the top part.
Oh, okay.
Because it's all the way under New Documents. Yes.
And I'm still seeing some DPW concerns in that letter, so I would want to see a clean letter from DPW.
Which concerns are you looking at? Because I only see conditions.
Uh...
Everything here states it's been satisfied.
Stormwater standard seven not met.
Have been met. It says it after that it's been met. Basically, all of the information was provided relative to the focal point, and the rain guardian.
Oh, yeah. There it is.
And it's all set.
Okay.
Wouldn't have come tonight unless it was.
Yeah, I looked at it quickly. I thought it was clean, but I meant to miss something.
Just looking, because I had a note about the overflow. Yeah, sewer comment number one has applicant owner to submit documentation stating that he or she is planning to utilize allotted five-hundred GPD.
Yeah, we've already done that, but they want something in writing. But the applicant is the owner, and the applicant has stated that that is, in fact, the case. They want something to put in their file in writing that says we're using our amount of excess for this project, so that we don't try to come back and use the five-hundred gallons again, which is new. I haven't written one of those yet, but we will prepare that.
So will you append that letter that you send to them, to us, for our next packet?
For the file. Certainly. Yep.
Anyone else have any further questions?
I just have one little bone to pick, and that is that it's not really particularly relevant to our decision, but if I recall, in there you make reference to Mass DEP accepting New Jersey and so forth results. And that's not true, that they don't accept it, they don't reject it, they just don't say one way.
They don't, right. They don't apply to...
Yeah. Yeah. So if you could in the future or not...
I'll make sure that language is changed.
Thank you.
Anita, did you have anything? Okay. So am I right? We have a public hearing to open on this?
I think it has been opened.
I mean, continue. Sorry. Wrong word. I'll take a motion.
To close the public hearing?
No, first we have to continue it.
Continue, see if there's anyone else to speak on.
To see if anyone else wants to speak. And then I need a second, and then we vote to continue the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this project?
Guess not.
I'll take a motion.
To continue?
To close.
Well, do we want to continue or close? Are we going to take any more information on this? We're expecting some more.
The only reason to keep the hearing open is if you wanted to further deliberate based upon the draft decision, or you can close the hearing and, you know, I draft the decision, and then you review and discuss.
Well, I'm perfectly willing to go that route as well. I don't see any issues.
Yeah.
Okay. A motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Anita voted yes.
Oh, Anita.
Anita.
She voted yes.
Are you in favor?
So would you like me to just draft a neutral decision at this point? Or do we want to do a, I mean, I haven't heard any specific concerns.
No, I'm prepared to...
I'm ready to vote.
To vote, yeah, to vote on it.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
You're voting on seoid, inclusionary housing, and aquifer.
So we can, we do them, this is seoid, so we can do them all in one shot.
You can, but those are the three major, three major areas of permitting.
Then I would, I would move to grant the special permits as requested. That's three, that's three permits there?
Doing a by right seoid.
Right.
The lot coverage under aquifer protection, and then the inclusionary housing permit.
Good. All right. So moved.
The only request I would actually make is a change to the O and M wording.
You want to put that, you want to just send me that, and we'll put it as a condition?
Yeah. It's essentially just, instead of saying, under the focal point maintenance, see attached manufacturer maintenance guide, it's all manufacturer required and recommended maintenance shall be followed, see attached.
Do you want to say that to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
That works.
You've made a motion?
Yep.
I'll second that.
All right. And so we'll bring it around?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Now...
Let's see. We definitely have to approve one set of minutes.
You got one more hearing.
One more hearing.
One more hearing still.
Need to open the hearing, read the legal ad off the agenda?
One fifty to one fifty-two Dalton.
Yep. So we have a new public hearing to open, one fifty to one fifty-two Dalton, Luke Fugere, for the construction of a detached forty-by-sixty-foot storage barn slash workshop that exceeds nine-hundred square feet, retire and requires a special permit per section one-ninety-five-eleven of the zoning bylaw and any other relief deemed necessary. The site is located at RB, in the RB Residential Zoning District, and is shown as parcel ID map fifty-one, block one-thirty-one, lot eighty-two, and consists of approximately one-point-six-six acres.
Evan, can I ask, what was our decision? Can you refresh our memory on this the last time?
So what was in front of you was a oversized accessory structure. You asked me what the particular vote was?
Yeah, because I thought it was one-way, but I don't see that. But what was the decision that was in front of us before?
Well, you voted to deny the special permit for the oversized accessory structure. I think the primary concern was that some members thought it was a commercial use, an extension of a commercial use. Others thought it just wasn't appropriate for the neighborhood just being oversized. So from there, and you'll hear tonight, the applicant went to the zoning board, and that that particular issue on the use was addressed by the zoning board, which I think leads, led the applicant back to the planning board.
Was it a vote to deny, or was it a failure to vote to approve?
No, we denied the project.
Was it a vote?
So the question, I thought they were two years. Will they come back in front of us?
Without a material change.
Well, that's, that's...
That's tonight.
Yeah, that's the question I have. So we're, tonight, we're just looking at whether the change is material, the proposed changes.
I think...
Yeah, I think we have the man.
So I don't think the statute is really clear on whether you would have to hold a separate hearing on the application once you make the determination. The way I read it, I think it required public notice that you're going to review the question as to whether or not there has been a change significant enough to move forward with a public hearing on the application. I think very likely you can just do both tonight if you vote that there has been a significant enough change.
Okay, but it is still going to be two votes?
Yes.
It'll be a vote and then a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. So you can, so they can come back, and applicant can come back, and we can, as a board, determine if there's enough change?
Yes. So...
Doesn't automatically wait two-year hiatus?
It's the lone exception to the two-year provision. So it's Chapter Forty-eight, Section Sixteen, and it says that, "No appeal, application, or petition which has been unfavorably and finally acted upon by the Special Permit Granting Authority or Permit Granting Authority shall be acted favorably upon within two years after the date of the final unfavorable action unless said Special Permit Granting Authority or Permit Granting Authority fines by a unanimous vote of a three-member board or by a vote of four members of a board of five members or a two-thirds vote of a board of more than five members, which would be your circumstance, specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based and describes such changes in the record of its proceedings." And it goes on to state, "And unless all but one of the members of the planning board consents thereto and after notices given to parties in interest of the time and place of the proceedings when the question of such consent will be considered."
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any case law regarding a refinement of the understanding of what material change is?
Yeah, that's the question.
I have not looked into that question. I don't think that there probably is a ton of case law on that, but I'm sure there's probably a straight case here or there. So I can look into that.
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking that for everybody's safety, ours and the proponents, if we think we can get a little additional information on just what is material, it might be well worth doing.
Well, let's talk about first what the changes were.
Okay, yeah, let's...
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify where we were.
You want the applicant to present?
Yes, please.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Pam Brown with Brown &amp; Brown in Bedford, representing Luke and Danielle Fugere, who are the proprietors of their couple of family businesses that are currently operated at one fifty, one fifty-two Dalton Road. So counsel, I think, and Evan summarized almost my beginning here, but they are correct in the statute that is required for you to make this consideration and vote, you need to make this finding that there are, call them changes, but in the conditions. So conditions aren't necessarily, the barn is different, it's the conditions surrounding the application. So I think first and foremost, I think a number of the board members a year, a little over a year ago, or a little less than a year ago, sorry, were really struggling with the issue of the use of the property, despite the fact... despite the fact it had been in the same kind of landscape contractor's use back to, you know, prior to nineteen eighty-four. And the ZBA debated that for several meetings with counsel's support, lots of investigation. And ultimately determined by unanimous vote that the current use, Luke has actually been there for almost five years operating this. They purchased the property in November nineteen, twenty eighteen. So it's been ongoing for a number of years. And it actually wasn't really problematic until he applied for this structure that he learned needed a special permit due to its size. I, I'm gonna try to avoid getting into the details of what the request is and focus on the issue of the statute, section sixteen. But in significant part, and probably the most significant part, is the fact that the original deliberations and discussion with this board, I know a couple of you are new and a couple are gone, was surrounding the use of the property and whether it was a legal non-conforming use, whether it could continue. You'll, I'm sure hear from counsel for one of the opposition that it's an illegal use and it's being appealed. That's the case, although in my experience typically courts don't overturn a, you know, a reasoned, reasoned decision of a board. I'm not the litigating attorney, so I won't, I won't focus on that. But it is significant that the ZBA looked at this. They investigated it independently, they reviewed the facts, they reviewed the information available to them. Counsel assisted them, and by unanimous decision, they made a finding that in one case, no variance was required, and I think we had, that might have been ZBA. It may get, my hearing's mixed up. But there was an old variance that was related to use of the garage as a retail flower shop. That use has been gone for many years and it's abandoned, and it's really not relevant. That really had no bearing on the underlying use that had been ongoing for many, many years back prior to the nineteen fifties. That was the commercial greenhouses. And I say "commercial" because they were over eight thousand square feet in greenhouses. And those uses carried on. The ZBA looked into the history of the zoning bylaw and the time at which the, the, your zoning bylaw actually added a use as a contractor's yard. Prior to that, what the board determined was that the landscaping company, the nursery, and it was part of my presentation, I think, to this board on the first round, was that, you know, things morph over time. You know, in the nineteen fifties, we didn't have landscaping companies. We weren't doing so much hardscape. We weren't doing pretty walls and, and walkways made out of, you know, stepping stones or pavers or things like that. So that was kind of a growing of the nursery business, as we've seen in many other locations as well. But ultimately, that's what the board determined, and that combined with the zoning bylaw that defined nursery that could have included those items. And then later, much later, I think it was nineteen ninety-six, the town added a specific provision for landscape contractor. So I think I did provide the ZBA application or the decision in your package. In addition to the actual issue of the use itself, and again, I bring that up because I think that was the struggle of many of the board members before we got to a vote. We have made some changes to the barn. Again, some of the discussion surrounded a little bit on, you know, size and discussion and of the aesthetics of the building. And thank you for that. So a couple of things that Luke has proposed that he would do if desirable to the board, and again, these are changes proposed, and I've indicated optional where, when we get to that discussion, I guess. But those include doing a fieldstone foundation, adding a cupola, windows, and then bird and bat houses, which he would do anyway. Maybe more importantly is, it had been argued, at least by many, that the awning was included, you know, making this a thirty-six hundred square foot structure, you know, as big as the house. The house is actually about forty-four hundred square feet, but we've removed the awning. And so now the dimensions of the barn are a total of twenty-four hundred square feet, forty by sixty. And we've also lowered it a little bit. There were some questions about height. At one point, someone said it was thirty-two feet. We're actually now just under twenty, nineteen feet, eleven inches. An agreement that continues, and we allowed to be part of the ZBA decision, included maintaining and replacing as necessary the buffering for the neighbors, those being, you know, fence or landscaping, really whichever the neighbors were preferring. And I've already mentioned the height. So it is our position that these are significant changes in the circumstances that rise the level that it satisfies the statute. It's been almost a year since we were last here with you. And in that time, we've been through ZBA. And that was, despite a unanimous decision, was appealed. So we are before the land court with different counsel than I'm representing the Fugere. So I'll pause there and respond to any questions, or Luke can jump in if there's anything I've missed. And we're prepared to go forward with the discussion of the merits of the application as well. But I know you need to make this first step.
Can, can you give a specific list of what you consider to be conditions that are materially changed?
It's in the.
It's here.
No, I, because early, because early on in your presentation, you made reference to, you made, you emphasized the point that it's conditions, not necessarily the structure. But then most of the changes you were mentioning had to do with changes to the structure. So I was, guess what I was fishing at was, are you looking, are you considering any other conditions other than what changes you made to the structure?
The most significant, in my opinion, is the ZBA action. There were a couple board members that really didn't want to vote before the ZBA voted. And, you know, partially, I think, our mistake, but, you know, Luke was very anxious to see, you know, to try to get the structure in the ground. He's got falling down buildings, he's taking down four buildings. You know, this, this barn would replace four buildings that currently exist on the site. I think my letter says three, because there are three sheds that are together, but there's actually a shop. Yeah. I don't know if you could, there's a shop closer to the house that would also come down? So, I mean, the barn is proposed to clean up the site and to consolidate all the activity in all those separate structures.
So Paul, is that a, is that, what's your impression of a, considering the, the fact that the board was originally concerned about the fact about this being a non-conforming use or basically a use that was not allowed? That now it's gone through the ZBA, the ZBA has said it's an okay use? And that that being considered a material change to the conditions? Is that, in your mind, a reasonable interpretation or?
I think that it is, to the extent that the board's, this board's determination previously that it wasn't an allowed use was material to its decision.
It really was.
It was for me.
No, I remember, I remember, yeah.
A question, Evan, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, the reason, the reason I ask that is because I've read the letter from the, from the neighbor's attorney. And, and, and so I thought that would be an important point that we clarify.
And then the overhang too.
Yeah.
The size was, so the previous proposed size was how many square feet?
It, it was the twenty-four hundred square feet plus an awning that I believe was sixteen by sixty?
It was a good size.
So removing the awning and reducing the height, thereby reducing the overall structure size.
I will say, I have been reviewing the cases that do address this, and there aren't very many. One of the ones that I did just review dealt with a reduction in the height of a proposed building, and that was found to be adequate.
Just the height alone.
I, I don't know, I give an impression, but.
So we have the change that the use is now per ZBA allowable? And the change in the square footage by retracting the awning and the height by reducing the size? I, I would venture to say, I feel comfortable saying that's material.
Yeah, it brought everything in the building.
I, I would add in addition, I don't think any of the changes to the building are material. I think the one truly material piece here is the ZBA decision. Because you're absolutely correct. A big part of the decision when we made it had to do with the use. And, and I, that doesn't necessarily mean I, I'm in favor of everything that's proposed for this. But I certainly think the ZBA decision is enough to, to be a substantial change circumstance and allow us to, to take this up again. And I'm not sure I'd necessarily want to do it tonight unless we maybe start it, because I think this is going to be more.
May I have a word on that issue before you make a decision?
We're gonna open it up to the public.
We're gonna discuss, and then we do a public hearing.
We will.
You will hear before you make a decision, before you vote on your claim.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have to open it up again.
Well, well, now, let's be clear on which piece of this. We're, we have two pieces. We have the decision on the, on the presented plan, and we have the decision on whether to open it up in the first place.
Yeah.
And you may be, I, I'm not sure which of those you're talking about.
I think he wants to speak on the material change.
I do, yeah. And I think.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
I think we should.
I think we should, yeah.
He should, yeah.
It would be nice to, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think the issue was regarding zoning boards and once they made the decision. However, it would be nice to refresh our memory what the building looked like a year ago. And I don't know if Evan has access to those files, so that we can just see, is if it's just the awning that came off, then what really changed? I mean, it's just the awning. So then the new, the new board member should be able to see what was there before. But then we should make the decision.
Anyone remember the specific date?
I don't know the date. So I don't know, if that's something we could have.
Lost in the midst of time.
But otherwise, I, I agree with you, Mike. I think the zoning board was the foundation of the whole thing.
Yeah. Well, maybe we should.
And this would clean up the site.
I'm thinking maybe we should hear.
April seven, twenty twenty-three.
Possible opposing views on that before we.
April seven, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty?
April.
April seven.
ZBA ruled on it in February, so.
It was definitely before.
Twenty-two, maybe?
I think it was twenty-two.
Yeah, it was twenty-two.
Yeah, sorry.
April twenty-two?
I misread.
April twenty-seven?
I need to refresh it, because I can't remember it.
How was that?
I remember I voted for it, anyway.
I don't even know if they had, I think they did have no vision.
Am I the only one that voted, yes?
So.
It was four to three.
I'm sorry, Anita, what was that?
She's a question.
I had voted.
You had a problem with the size, Anita, if I remember correctly.
Size, for me, was not necessarily the use. Like, it was the size, and that hasn't changed for me, nor has style necessarily changed.
Well, not April.
All right, you can continue.
Yeah.
Evan, we voted on it on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wow, a year ago.
The original package was May twenty-sixth.
It should be in the.
Eight twenty-sixth, okay.
I have a copy of the original application.
Told you, Ted.
I'm gonna find it.
Well, it's, um, the original application is, is dated, um, uh, it's actually, it's hard to find.
May twenty-two.
If we, if we voted on September fourteenth, maybe it's, yeah.
Okay, let me look there.
Can somebody open a couple more windows?
All right, one, there it is.
There it is. That'll have the plans on it right there.
This is the actual application that was filed.
Want to see photos, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they just have a shot of it. This is the existing, right?
All right, that's the.
Yeah, it was the representation, yeah, with the awning, right.
The awning.
So they added a cupola now.
Yeah, the awning, yeah.
Added a cupola, removed the awning, and.
And reduced it by how many feet?
Fifteen.
No, not.
Height-wise.
Yeah, it, it was about, it was a little over twenty, and now it's below twenty.
Oh, I thought you said it was thirty-five.
At one of the hearings, somebody, some member of the public suggested it was thirty-two.
Oh. But it wasn't.
It wasn't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, at least everyone's now.
Okay.
I would suggest that we take a vote on whether this is a.
You, you want to let?
We have to have the attorney, sorry, sorry. You want to speak to us, please?
Thank you.
We don't need to have a public hearing on whether it's material, right?
That's procedural.
No, we don't.
Here for a director butter, who has appeared before you on this issue before. I did submit a letter last night, but based on some of the questions. But some, based on the questions that have been asked today, I think you may not have had a chance to read it. And so I will, I will, with your permission, go. And it's relatively brief, and it covers all the issues as I see them, except for one very important issue which needs to be emphasized, to the extent, to the extent that the change, the material change is the decision of the Board of Appeals. There's some very important thing for you to realize. That decision is not effective until it is recorded at the Registry of Deeds. That's a requirement for a decision of the Board of Appeals to be, must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds before it goes into effect. It will not be released by the town clerk for recording until any pending appeal has been either abandoned or completed. So at this point, the decision of the Board of Appeals is merely the opinion of the Board of Appeals. Mr. Thatcher and I appeared before the planning board several times about a year ago in opposition to the granting of a permit to Mr. Fugere for the construction of a commercial storage building and garage for heavy construction equipment on his property on Dalton Road. The substance of our objection related less to the details of the proposed building than to the fact that neither the building nor the current or intended use of the property for a landscaping and construction business is permitted, it was a permitted use under the zoning bylaw with or without the addition of the building proposed in the application. As a result of a request for zoning enforcement addressed to the building commissioner, the response was that the continuation of the current use, and therefore the extension of it, required the amendment of a nineteen fifty-five variance permitting a garden shop, you've heard that referred to. The October fourth, twenty twenty-two, voted the planning board to approve the special permit per section one ninety-five dash eleven for a detached structure over nine hundred square feet with the condition suggested by town's council that this approval be subject to the approval of the ZBA, failed by a vote, three in favor of four opposed. No reason was stated for the denial because there was only a motion to grant the permit, which failed to carry. The applicant did not appeal this decision, which they could have done if they were dissatisfied with the decision. No appeal was taken. Chapter forty-eight, section sixteen, provides that a matter may not be reconsidered within two years of a prior unfavorable decision unless the planning board finds by a two-thirds vote of the board, in this case, of a board of more than five members, that the new application contains specific material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based. And you, counsel has read that provision to you, and there is a question as to what, perhaps what material changes are. I believe that the material changes that are contemplated in the statute are changes to the actual structure itself. The changes made in the new application are primarily cosmetic, siding, cupola, bird and bat houses, et cetera, an issue which does not appear to have been a significant issue in the original denial of the application, and certainly not mentioned in the vote of the board. In addition, the new application addresses the special permit criteria of section one ninety-five, one oh-three B. In addition, the new application addresses the special permit criteria of section one ninety-five, one oh-three B, largely ignored in the original application, emphasizing that this application is essentially a do-over, which it is, because it just got turned down and they're coming back because they want to make insignificant changes and then have a second bite at the apple. In nineteen, in a nineteen eighty-one decision in Raney versus Board of Appeals, which is cited by the attorney for the applicant, the applicant suggests that there be some, that there be some flexibility in reconsidering a request for a special permit in the light of altered conditions, but continues, "To the extent that the local board makes findings that a reapplication accompanied by circumstances which are specifically and materially different, such local determination ought to receive the difference from a reviewing court, which is generally accorded to the discretionary aspects of local zoning decisions." However, and this is a big however, however, the changes proposed by the applicant, although perhaps specific, are not materially different. In addition, the supermajority required by section sixteen, while short of impossible, this is a very high hurdle for the board to clear. This is what the court said. "The policy is to give finality to administrative proceedings and to spare affected property owners, such as the abutters, from having to go repeatedly to the barricades on the same issue." Subsequent to the original vote of the planning board on April seventh, the zoning board of appeals voted to overturn the building commissioner's opinion that an amendment to the nineteen fifty-five variance for a garden shop was required and to allow the continuation of the mixed-use property and current commercial nursery landscape contractor business to operate as it currently exists. This result was based on a number of specific findings made by the board, which are listed in the decision, the first of which is that the board finds that the current use is a lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming use, which has not been unlawfully altered. That's a very important factor in this, in this case. Aside from the fact that that decision has no legal standing at this point because it is under appeal and remains merely the opinion of the Board of Appeals on the matter. The decision has been appealed to the land court in the course and the case is currently pending. Until the court reaches a decision, there can be no certainty as to whether the current use of the applicant's property and therefore the proposed new structure is one permitted under the zoning bylaw. And in fact, what, what prevails is the previous conditions. The previous condition is the building inspector declared that, that a variance was required to continue this use. And, and the, and the decision of the Board of Appeals to overturn that decision is not effective until the matter has been decided by the land court. However, the outcome will be either that the commercial use of the property is not permitted, that is what the land court may decide, or in the alternative, that if it is permitted, it is a prior existing non-conforming use as, as found by the Board of Appeals. In the latter case, the proposed structure would require a variance from the Board of Appeals under section one ninety-five dash eight D of the bylaw, which says, "Variants required, except as provided for in subsection C and E, which refer to single and two-family dwellings. The reconstruction, extension, structural change or non-conforming structure in such a manner as to increase an existing non-conformity or create a new non-conformity shall require the issuance of a variance from the Board of Appeals." In addition to the, in addition to the, that requirement of the zoning bylaw under section six of chapter forty-eight, the Zoning Enabling Act, it requires that pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority, which in this case would be the Board of Appeals or by, or by special permit granting authority designated by ordinance, or, or by law, that such change, extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. So bottom line, structurally, this is, I think, similar enough for you to say, we don't want somebody coming back time after time after time if they get turned down. And that is that the policy of that case is, is to give your decisions some finality. And unless there is an important reason to change what you decided before, making the build. And if you think that the raising, lowering the height of the building by one foot is significant, keep in mind that that, the height of the building was not one of the factors taken into account in denying the original permit, nor were the lack of a cupola or the fieldstone footing or the, the siding of the building or the birdhouses or the bat houses. The lack of those things were not considerations that you took into account when you denied this permit. So the question is, is this really significantly different? Or is it just something that has been changed in minor details in order to get it in front of you, to give you a chance to approve it again? Or to approve it really, even though you had denied approval of this only a year ago? So I'll leave you with that. And I hope that you make, that you, that you make the right decision and not having to put us through the, going through the substance, the substance of this application again a year early. I'm sure we'll be back again in a year regardless of, of the outcome of this because the two years will be up. And maybe we will have some finality, although I doubt it, from the land court on the zoning issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this Paul? Treading on a weird. Oh, co-counsel. Oh, okay.
My name is Christopher Vicaro. I'm co-counsel with Mr. Dane. I'm not going to reiterate what he just said, other than to point out that this is an expansion of the use. I believe that the area of the outbuildings on this property are going to be increased in size considerably as a result of this. But I also want to point out, and I'm glad the town council is here, that we, in looking at section sixteen of the zoning act, there's really two things that have to happen tonight for this to be deemed a non-repetitive petition. Six out of the seven of you have to consent to this going forward as a threshold issue. And that requires that notice go out, that a vote is going to be taken on that issue of consent. I, I, I just have to point out that the, the public notice that went out on this does not mention anything about whether or not you're going to hold a vote on consenting to this, which would require six of you, not just five of you. And so I, you know, I would venture to say that this notice is defective and probably should be repaired and remedied before this board renders a decision as to whether or not six out of the seven of you are prepared to consent to this decision, to allowing this to go to the next level where you would decide that, whether or not there are specific and material changes to the application. I know that Ms. Brown and Mr. Dane have already discussed their positions on that, but I just wanted to add that as another layer to this thing, if I may. Thank you.
If I might.
So I have not reviewed the public notice for this.
Okay.
I haven't seen it. I can't provide an opinion on that.
What, what, do you have any sense as to what the requirement is there? We have, obviously have public.
It may be in the file.
Yeah, we, we have a public notice requirements. We certainly have public notice requirements wherever we are anticipating a public hearing. We're certainly anticipating a public hearing, assuming that we get through the initial step. We're anticipating a public hearing on.
I, I think reference to chapter forty-eight, section sixteen.
Yeah.
Would be sufficient to put anybody on notice that a vote would be taken.
Yeah, that's what I was.
But I haven't seen the notice, so I don't know exactly.
Okay, then, then may I propose that we continue for long enough for town council to have a quick look at that and give us a procedural path forward?
Yeah.
That make sense?
I just need to see it, that's.
Yeah, well, we could send, I probably have it over here. Is this something you can look at quickly or would you like to take it?
No, it's. Take five seconds. So this does not include a reference to chapter forty-eight, section sixteen? And doesn't really get into the process, so I do think continuing and re-noticing would be advised.
Okay, I would suggest we do that.
And then the whole Board of Appeals waiting on that.
So I, I did hear the, the comments from Attorney Dane with regards to the requirement for recording the decision. That's chapter forty-eight, section eleven. That is only applicable to special permits and variances. The decision of the Board of Appeals was a decision on an appeal of an enforcement action by the building commissioner that does not require to be recorded.
Can I also ask you a specific question about the, the ZBA decision? Was it a decision for allowing a contractor's landscape yard, a outdoor landscaper's yard or an indoor? And does it matter? Because there are two separate uses in our use table.
They are now, apparently they weren't then.
But they weren't at the time is, is the issue. And I think. I, I would rely upon counsel for the applicant to confirm, but I think there was both indoor and outdoor use historically. Is that correct?
Okay.
In my hearing, the bylaw I think was wrong was two thousand and twelve, right?
Yeah, right.
The bylaw changed.
Yep.
This re-advertised hearing would have to, could not open until October twenty-fifth at the earliest.
So I move that we continue the matter, not necessarily the hearing itself because it would be a new one. But continue the matter to the twenty, what's this?
October twenty-fifth.
October twenty-fifth.
Can I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. So we will see you back in a month.
So will be no public input tonight?
No, because the.
Because we haven't opened a public hearing. I'm awful sorry that you guys sat here all night.
Anything else you needed me for?
Good thing you stayed.
I think we, yeah, good thing you stayed, though.
Well, I had a feeling.
You had a feeling it was going to get worse.
Now, this may bore the heck out of you, but that kind of discussion I live for.
Approve those set of minutes before you adjourn, please.
I, well, we have a couple more things.
I'm sorry, yes, you do.
Um, okay. So we want, we, I think we should, if anyone wants to say anything or recap our meetings last week, if you guys could take your conversation out of the room, it'd be great. Our MBTA zoning.
How, how did the Thursday session go? I, I made Tuesday, but not Thursday.
You weren't there?
Not Thursday. How could you, how could they tell?
We had a full board, thank you.
I think I was there Thursday.
Full board, minus, minus.
Anita's got a question.
Thank you guys for your time. We can't hear you yet.
Sorry.
Paul, can you, before you pack up and leave?
Yeah, oh, you want Paul, okay.
Almost out the door, Paul, you gotta be a little quicker.
I'm gonna be stealthier is what I need. Yes, Anita.
Okay, I can't see you. So, Gitter, you were opening up for the, about the MBTA. I have a question, and I know you answered this already, but then I was thinking about it. So, I'm just concerned about you last. In my business, right, it, any contract is renegotiable. So I know we said that this agreement is with the deed of, deed of the property.
Yes.
But can it, the two parties agreed to change it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but that would require the participation of the town.
Town vote.
And, and the applicant's property owner.
Okay, okay, my thought on this, and this is where I'm going with it. So we, the town, zone it MBTA that allows more units. The applicant, the landowner, says, oh, okay, that allows more units. I, this is not economics for me. I want to reopen up negotiations. What basis do we have to say no on that? Because we've zoned it and so that automatically, trying to make the assumption that we want this zone for this many units. How do we have a basis to stand up against that developer who says, now I want to put more units on it and I want to renegotiate?
We, we wouldn't need a basis. It requires the affirmative consent of both parties. So if the town refuses to consent, that's the end of the question. I mean, it, it could potentially impact the, the zoning district. If, if the property owner wants to go back to EO HLC and make an argument that the zoning district is not accurate because this agreement exists, you know, that, that could be a potential downfall. But there's no circumstance in which they could force the town to re-enter into a previously executed agreement.
Could they force us into zoning another area?
We zone it MBTA.
Correct. Well, I'm sorry, what was that?
So if we zone it MBTA, the high density, we can still say no.
Correct. The, the only potential downfall relating to that agreement is that at some point, if it's brought to the attention of the state, they can take a look at it and say, you zoned this area, knowing you had this agreement and therefore we're going to invalidate that, you know, on your count.
And they would most likely just have us rezone it.
Can't force us to say, well, now you have to go back and we have to deal with them, okay.
Correct.
Without penalty.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine there'd be a penalty. The penalty is going to be, you've got to go back through the process and identify another area.
Okay, that was all I wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure, again, these are the weird things I think about at like three in the morning, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you for staying.
I think about going through a meeting that one, our meetings are.
Yeah. Is Paul free to go? Is Paul free to go now?
Yes, please. Oh, sorry.
We only have to go through one more thing, right?
MB, okay, MBTA zoning.
I think NIMCOG wants to come back on October eleventh and reconvene, get some additional direction from the board.
For half an hour.
What time, six-thirty?
Sure.
Okay, and I just, final comment on, on MBTA. It was mentioned that we have plenty of time. You'll hear from NIMCOG on the eleventh that the state requires no less than a ninety-day submission prior to town meeting vote so that they can review.
Okay.
So it's, that, that April timeline is.
January coming up.
It'd be January?
Right.
So I, I would just like to recommend to the board, I think, I think as a board we should remove River Neck Road from this scenarios.
Okay.
And just my thought, and I don't think, based off of villages, walking distance, it's near not, it's not near anything. And I think the only reason it's there is because we got a developer that said, hey, I want to put my name up there.
Yeah.
So I think we've heard the public from that and I think, I think we should consider that and I think it can have NIMCOG, but I think we should also consider that down at the hotel, the Radisson area, I think we should include and expand that out to one-ten.
I, that was my thought.
Overlay some of the businesses that are there and across the street from Dunkin' Donuts Overlay some of the businesses that are there, and across the street from Dunkin' Donuts and across, on that side of the street.
Yeah, Paulmont.
And just do a study. Maybe that's another scenario piece of it, and how much, if they ever did that down the road, redevelop that area into a nice housing complex.
We talked about that, though, last, last meeting, and that would take away commercial.
I understand that, but there's got to be a give and go here a little bit. It's, you got sub-shops there, you got, there's not a lot of businesses that are heading down towards the Radisons. There's a few there, there's some empty places. I mean, I think we gotta, we gotta be able to look at, how do we want this place to look? We could control the look of that. And then, I'm not saying someone's gonna come in and build it.
And I agree with you, but I'm not sure if we want to do that through the MBTA zoning.
But then again, okay, so then, but you're talking about going to UPS, taking them up.
No, wait, I...
Overlaying them. That's a huge employer. That's a lot bigger than those people that are right there.
I think we should do some kind of village zoning.
Industrial, not commercial.
I'm talking about like, I'm talking about like a village effect down in that area.
Yeah, I think we should zone that with retail on the first
We're thinking about doing a separate overlay for the Chumford Mall.
Yeah, I agree with all of those.
I just don't have an idea. If you guys don't want it, that's fine, and that's fine.
No, I agree with what your vision is, but I don't think we should be doing that through MBTA.
Well, I was just trying to get some more square footage down that area, or, or we take into account the area up at 110.
But I don't think we need it, given...
We don't need it. We just have UMass and then Radisson, in my mind. That's just me.
I don't know, there were some good arguments, I thought, for 110.
I think we spread it out a little bit. I think it would go over a little bit better in town. If you spread it out in different areas, instead of just hitting boom, one area, or two, one and a half areas.
My opinion is that we can take care of conforming to the MBTA zoning with what we've got, and then, then take a look at the other areas and have more control over the zoning that we want to put in place
Not so high density.
Yeah, lower density, because I think 15 units per acre for those areas might be a little high. Maybe we can go down a little bit more and control the form a little bit better, and have that commercial down below and residential at the top.
Okay.
But I think we would lose all of that control with MBTA zoning.
Well, we would get 25% of, instead of the full percentage.
But no acres.
Right.
I also think we should take another look at the 110 heading towards Westford again. I mean, we all basically said we didn't want to touch the trailer park, but we could do the other side of the road, which a lot of it is already
Yeah.
dense, and see what, I mean, I tried to pull it out actually this afternoon, that, what was it, number seven or number eight? I didn't, I couldn't put my hands on it quickly, and I was on to the next issue. But I think we should maybe ask NIMCOG if they'll take a look at that again, if, and I first want to look and maybe at the one they already did. Maybe there's enough information there, but I think they had the trailer park in there.
They did.
Yeah. So maybe if we could have them cut it back, maybe cut back, or...
I would be agreeable to that, as long as they leave that alone.
And I agree with Mike personally. I would like to nix UPS out of this consideration, because I think it scares the heck out of me that it would be potential, much like River Neck, of a big chunk of land. It's probably unlikely, but if you're going to consider what if, I don't want 1,400 units coming online in a very short period of time.
On Brick Hill Road.
On Brick Hill Road. I just don't think that's a good...
They've already got some there.
Yeah, they got issues already.
Because it would happen all, it could potentially happen all at once. Like, we're talking about kind of strategic, long-range things, if any, and that hopefully would never happen, but I think the possibility, if it does, is potentially, in my mind, catastrophic. That's maybe too strong of a word, but...
So how many scenarios are we gonna present? Three?
No, I think
At the end?
I think we pick one.
Yeah, I think...
It's gonna be just one?
One, but it may have multiple districts.
Okay.
So, Deirdre, I just want to, if I'm hearing you correctly, so you're, you want to look at stuff that will not convert short-term?
Yeah, or a lot all at once, like a big piece of land that could be developed as one fell swoop. Like, if UPS decided to leave, that would be, how many acres? 79 buildable acres or something? Like, that's zoned 15, 15 per acre?
No, I just want to make sure, like, I'm okay, like, I, I'm not eager to have any additional MBTA, you know, density, housing, stuff that we can't control.
Right.
So I'm, hey, look at that, like, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you there. So I personally, living by there, would prefer residential property than those traffic trailers that I've been driving by, but that's a whole different story. But I personally would like us to look at areas that are already developed and are not likely to be redeveloped in the short term.
Right, and I think that that 110 corridor is, I mean...
Pretty much built.
Pretty dense right now.
Yep, no, I agree with you. If we can get those, and that's why I was just kind of wanted to make sure that UMass West Campus was bulletproof.
Was solid, yeah.
So if we were gonna add 110 to that, would we have to have a public hearing for that neighborhood?
I don't know. I mean, we could have a, maybe we...
Early up to the board.
I think we could, and we also could have, maybe have it, I also would like, at some point before we propose a final plan, have the Select Board, FinCom, and some of the other stakeholders come to a combined meeting. So maybe we could make a combined public hearing with the other boards invited to attend, or have it a joint meeting.
Have McCarthy or something.
Yeah, and...
There's also the zoning, which we still need to define what the zoning is for these districts, right?
Well, first, we have to figure out the districts.
Well, no, I agree. We need to define, I'm thinking, I'm thinking in our timeframe, if we want to specify the zoning, and then we want to have public input on that zoning, then, you know, how do we space that all out?
If you, if all agree that the viability is less likely, then the sensitivity as to the specificity of the zoning becomes less, less of a, less critical.
And they can be zone-specific to each district.
They can be, they can be. So, for example, if you were to zone River Neck, that'd be a very high likelihood, so you'd have to pay particular attention to the details of the zoning, the architecture, the bulk, the mass,
Can we amend it after?
the missing middle, but if your, if your strategy is to identify areas that are less likely, you may not need to be as concerned about spending time and energy.
I think we should still work on, on making it the best zoning
Yeah, I'm just saying, it wouldn't, may not need to be as detailed.
Right.
Right, so I guess the question for the board is, I will let NIMCOG know you want to revisit Littleton Road for the 11th.
Minus the trailer park.
Minus the, yeah, the mobile park, and I guess for the board needs to begin to think about, if you add Littleton Road, you want to reduce acreage somewhere else.
Maybe.
We're getting rid of River Neck.
Well, no, if we're going at the moment, it seems like if we're getting, potentially getting rid of River Neck and potentially getting rid of UPS, that leaves us with the remaining districts.
The preferred scenario that NIMCOG recommended was UMass and Radisson.
Right.
Hundred, hundred acres, done.
Done.
But the Radisson included five stories.
That's right.
Including the Hong Kong restaurant.
That's, that's a problem.
So if you add Littleton Road, you may be able to eliminate Radisson, or go down to three stories.
Yeah, yeah, we can...
Would that change it from a redevelopment to a demolition or something?
I don't know.
I don't know why you would, I mean, I would be okay with the five stories of an existing, in the existing lot that's there.
What about the Hong Kong? Why did they include the Hong Kong?
They have to have more than, more than one parcel.
Five acres.
If you go to the Hong Kong, and then you lower that area of height.
Right. You're saying Littleton Road is going to be a lot of acreage.
Is the Holiday Inn on the same parcel?
Yep.
It is? I forgot that.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we'll, 11, 6:30 on the 11th for MBTA zoning.
All right, daycare, adult daycare amendment passed?
Specifically, I'd like to talk about the timeline there, because I think we, I mean, Chris had mentioned this, too. Want to be sure that the public has an opportunity to put on the zoning aspect as well.
Yeah, I totally agree. We need to, like, back it out to figure out our timeline.
We'll do that for the 11th, have a timeline.
Okay. Adult daycare zoning, I presented not very well to the Select Board. I didn't know why it was brought up in the first place, and Evan was unavailable for me to ask that day.
Are you gonna go, are you gonna join FinCom tomorrow night?
I think Anita's going to. What do you think, Anita? You want to do it on your own, or you want backup?
Well, she's already won it.
I indulge, I engage the whole room. There was like four planning board members here, and I asked anybody if they knew what the answer to the question I was posed was. It might be good to have backup.
You're muted, Anita. We couldn't hear you.
You're still muted.
I'm, I'm fine, fine doing it.
Well, I mean, if I, if I may, and I hope I'm not poking a sore button, I think when you're there, you should either be FinCom or Planning Board, but not both.
Yeah.
And that's why I think it may make sense to have
All right, I'll present since I already did.
I mean, that's just my view of it. I
Okay.
You see, you see my rationale.
Yep, yep, perfectly fine.
All right, unless somebody else wants to relieve me of that?
I might. That's tomorrow night? What time's that gonna be?
He sent out a timeline I didn't look at.
I have, I have some stuff that ties me up. It's probably 6:30, 6:00 or 6:30.
6:30, we start...
All right, well, I may, I may come by, I may not, it depends on when the Tewksbury Farmers Market winds up.
Okay, and then, so I'll go, I'll be there in any case. And then the liaison updates. I know, Chris, you've been going and speaking at the Conservation Commission. Did you have anything in particular you wanted to report back?
Yeah. So they, the Conservation Commission continued without testimony hearings on 270 Bill Recker and Hildreth. For 270 Bill Recker, they're waiting for peer reviews on Stormwater and
LSP.
LSP.
Yeah.
License site professional.
And then for Brick Hill, they're looking for two reviews, rare species and a nesting study, right?
Yeah, wildlife habitat study, just general wildlife habitat, and then also rare species study. See if there are rare species there. Because it's just south of reported sightings of nesting Blandings turtles, which is a threatened species.
Nesting Blandings turtles.
What do they look like? I suppose they're pretty rare.
It's, they're very rare. We actually picked, the priority habitat that's there was done for the wood turtle.
All right, let's approve those minutes.
Wait a minute, huh?
This is important.
Well, maybe I'll go up there and...
There was like an army helmet?
Yeah.
And then they have a yellow, very bright yellow, like jaw down to the...
Oh, I saw those on my, in my yard.
I ran one over there.
I'm almost positive. What's it called?
Do you have a picture of it?
I think my husband took one.
Send, send a picture, because
What's it called?
we'll let you know, Blandings.
Okay, because there's, there's a certain turtle that suns itself on a small pond at Watten Street. I may take a picture.
If he had yellow lines on his face, it's probably a painted.
Yeah, it's probably a painted.
Probably painted, if he had yellow lines, like...
It's okay, you can add that addition to your house now.
Okay. No new business. Anyone else have a liaison?
Housing Advisory Board, if you'd like to hear that, I'll be brief. So I attended a Housing Advisory Board meeting on September 19th about, and one of the main topics on the agenda was 243 River Neck Road. You might recall, this is the former Princeton Properties site, where a 40B permit was issued, a comprehensive permit years ago. The original proposal was for 48 garden-style apartments. There's been numerous site issues, as you know, over the years. The comprehensive permit expired, so now the project proponent, it's a different proponent, talked about the need to do a different project. It would probably most, most likely be a local, an LIP, or a, you know, a so-called friendly 40B, that, but it would have much less, the number of units would be drastically reduced to about 22, and what they proposed is a, is a plan showing six small, single-family homes and 16 townhouse rental units. So the next step, if it, if it is an LIP, it would most likely go to the Select Board for approval, so we'll probably be hearing more on that weeks ahead. Hey, Evan, on the, just on the agenda there, the next meeting is the October 11th and the 25th, right?
Yes. And the 11th is the same night as the town meeting pre-meeting.
We all, they always do it to us, every single year.
I won't be here for the 25th. Going to my daughter's graduation in Ireland.
Ooh.
What's that?
You can zoom in. Have a Guinness for me.
Yeah, zoom.
Fortunately, I think for pre-town meeting, the Planning Board's article is pretty, but for the 11th, you're gonna start at 6:30, half-hour MBTA zoning, 10 Hildreth, we're gonna review the scopes, 93 Brick Hill, continued public hearing, and 10 Cross Street is a new public hearing.
Okay, and then the minutes. Does everyone have a chance to read those?
We have to accept the minutes of April 12.
Nope. I had a couple edits that I mentioned last time that didn't make it in, I guess. Will we approve with those, with those edits? Yeah, let me just find. And you can sign them to me, Becky?
Yeah, I sent to, yeah, Becky.
Becky responded.
You win the vote.
You could, you could do a motion as amended, and then Chris can forward it. So moved. Yeah, it's
I'll second that.
two names misspelled. Yeah, and John, John sent those in today as well, yes.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
One more motion.
Aye.
One more motion?
Anita, one more motion.
Our motions are closed.
I'll second that. Our meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Bye-bye.